I would like to, at the request of Mr. Sean Brand from the Brentsville District, I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself. Call the Prince William County School Board meeting order. At the request of Mr. Sean Brand from the Brentsville District, I'd like to ask Father Thomas Vanderwoody up for an invocation.
Dear Lord, Eternal Father, we ask your prayers for our Prince William County School Board as they begin this new year. That they may be guided by you who are love itself, that they may each know that they are a child of God, loved eternally, and each one of us may know the same. We ask you that their deliberations and decisions may be guided by your Son, who are the way, the truth, and the life, and also by the guidance given them by your Holy Spirit, that all of us might be brought to your eternal life, which you have created us for. Amen.
Thank you. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask any students in the audience, if you could scouts, anyone in the audience, please come forward here to the front of the podium, and we can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I see, I see you looking at me. I see you looking at me. Come on up. I see a young lady here in a teal jacket in the front, right here, with the flower. Come on up. Stand right here, we're going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Gavin Kent, I'm a sophomore at Brentsville.
Thank you very much. The rest of the board, if you don't mind, I'm going to take just a brief moment of Chairman's prerogative here. With the, I'd like to, with sadness, the entire board is obviously saddened to hear the loss of Senator Colgan, the namesake of our most recent high school, we dedicated it in his name. I have asked, for many who didn't see it, I have asked the superintendent and his staff to queue up the video of, the dedication video that we did when we, when we named his high school, so we'd like to present that today.
He is quite an entrepreneur, forty years in the Senate is truly, truly extraordinary.
You divide people sometimes between workhorses and show horses, and Chuck was definitely a workhorse.
If there were a political Virginia Hall of Fame, Chuck Colgan would be a first ballot entrant.
A father, grandfather, great-grandfather, Senator, statesman, and he has touched so many lives across this great Commonwealth.
As a young boy growing up in Garrett County, Maryland, Charles J. Colgan had big dreams that included making it on his own and flying.
My dad had a passion for flying since he was a small boy, and as soon as he graduated from high school, he enlisted in the Army Air Corps and served during World War II.
Got discharged in 1947, and then I went, got a job working for Capital Airlines as a mechanic, and then from that became a commercial pilot for almost thirty years.
His lifelong passion then became his family business, as he and his wife Agnes founded Colgan Airways and Prince William County.
All of the children at one point worked at the business. As we all had children, they came into the business. And the many, many people that worked at Colgan Air and Colgan Airways over the years, we never referred to them as employees, we always referred to them as Colgan Air family members. Both my parents were very active in the community, and they wanted, you know, they wanted to give back. First things he did was become involved in the Chamber of Commerce, and then served two years actually as President of the Chamber, and that was really what launched his political career.
A visionary and champion of Prince William County economic development, Chuck Colgan served four years on the Board of County Supervisors, and in 1976, he was elected to the Virginia Senate for the twenty-ninth district.
Yes, I ended up serving forty years in the Senate, and I wasn't trading experience for anything, I really, really loved it.
The humble and effective legislator was known for creating compromise in order to move the state and his district forward.
We needed to get a budget passed. I had asked my Chuck, we need your support, we've got to have a budget, and he said, you know what, I'm going to go home this weekend, I'm going to talk to my constituents, and I'm going to do the right thing. And sure enough, the deciding vote just a couple weeks later was Chuck Colgan.
Throughout his career, he's been principled and focused on putting people and principle over party and politics. He's a man of integrity, he made decisions not on process, not on partisanship, but on the merits of an idea.
Virginia's longest-serving Senator was a leader in building a world-class higher education system. He secured state funding to open both the Woodbridge and Manassas campuses of Northern Virginia Community College, and was instrumental in opening the Prince William campus of George Mason University.
I made the public school system and higher education, I made those real, my primary thing, and that's what I worked for mostly in Richmond.
I think by anyone's measure, my dad has been a tremendous success, and I think for my dad, the real measure of his success is the wonderful father, grandfather, and great-grandfather that he has been and continues to be. In fact, my dad's favorite poem by Martin Buxbaum talks about the real meaning of success.
There are many measures you can use when measuring success. You can measure it through fancy car, expensive home address, but the real measure of your success is something you cannot spend. It's the way your son describes you when talking to a friend.
I hope by having my dad's name on the building, that the students that go to Colgan High School will learn from his example of faith, family, incredible community service, honesty, integrity, and perhaps most of all, his amazing determination.
I would like the kids to know that if I can do it, you can do it. In church, I gave a speech one time, he said, never quit, never quit, never, never, never quit. End of speech. Thank you for the voice in church, and you're going to be a winner.
Senator Colgan was a huge supporter and advocate for Prince William County Schools and our county as a whole, and he will be sorely missed. Moving on to the business of the school board, we have our annual organizational meeting, and I now declare that open. We are moving on to item ten point zero one, which is approval of the annual organizational meeting agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the annual organization meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Then we're now moving on to item ten point zero two, which is nomination for a vice chairman. I will make the motion that the Prince William County School Board elect Lily Jessie as vice chairman for 2017. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion, I'll start first. I've obviously honored to work with Ms. Jessie, not only in our first year together, but it, you know, it's certainly with, with four new board members and, and a few returning members, and even one new board member along the way, somewhere in between, we gathered up a new one. You know, I've, I have, you know, already had a lot of respect for you, Ms. Jessie, and I, and I have even more than I did so before. Obviously, we're getting to know each other over the last twelve months, but, but more so, I think it's important to understand, and, and one of the reasons, my, my daughter asked me to, for her to come to the, she wanted to come to the board meeting today, and originally, I thought she could come to the next one just because of the timing, but I, I thought about it for a second longer, and I thought, what a great opportunity for her to see what, what women are capable of, and a powerful woman like yourself, and a chance to be, to be nominated again for the role of vice chairman, and I'm very happy to do so, and, and I'm happy that she's here to join us for this moment, although as an eight, as an eight-year-old, she probably doesn't recognize it right now, but, but one day, maybe she will. So, it is with honor that I, that I nominate you and recommend you for this position. Anyone else? Take the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Vote seven yes. Vote is seven yes, one no. Deutch, motion passed.
Ladies and gentlemen, the vice chairman for 2017, Ms. Lily Jessie. Ms. Jessie, by policy, you can have a few words here if you'd like.
I came on this board reluctantly, really, and I've never sought an office. I've been in a huge organization, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, for many years, and I never ran for any office. I did MLK because that's what I wanted to do. I've tried to stay true to what I wanted to do, which is an advocate for children, a voice for the voiceless, and I'm honored to be on this board, I'm honored to work with Dr. Waltz, and you know, he and I worked together when I was principal, I'm honored to work with you and Ms. Darlington and her staff, I'm honored to work with all of you. And Mr. Sawyer is very new to this board, and when we first got together, we had all these differences about what, how things work and all this, and we've really come together, I think, over the year to see what I can add, and also what this new board adds. I will tell you that you guys are out there, you do a lot of things, you make lots of motions, and I didn't before, and I've learned something from you. I've learned that if you want to get something done, you put it on the agenda, and so I just want to thank you for your, your thoughts, and sometimes we don't always agree, but I just wanted to say that I'm very grateful, and I'm very grateful to have served this school division. I've been here since the early seventies, and I'm still hanging in there, thank you very, very much. And to PWEA, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Sorry, technical difficulties, making sure we move along here. We are now on to the clerk appointment, and by policy, it asks me to ask the superintendent for a recommendation for the clerk.
I recommend Mrs. Debbie Urban for clerk of the board.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion that Prince William County School Board appoint Deborah H. Urban as clerk of the Prince William County School Board for 2017. The salary for the clerk shall be as currently budgeted. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I'd like a second.
Thank you. Discussion, I'll take the lead on this again since it's my motion. Ms. Urban, you're going to get some praise, so buckle up, I know it doesn't happen all the time. Yeah. Obviously, not, not everyone quite understands the role of the clerk until you fully get on the board and understand that she has, she has, you know, eight, eight bosses to serve simultaneously, and sometimes that is a challenging effort, and, and certainly one that you can't always have friends or always have enemies either at the same time. So, it is not an easy job, but I have, I have grown to, to get to know you, of course, at the very beginning, but also respect you a lot for the work that you do for our board, the effort that you put in, although it's not always easy, and certainly probably underappreciated even from the public view, but the work that you do for our board is priceless, although your salary is not, the work that you do is, is priceless, and so we thank you, I thank you for the work that you've done for us this past year, and I look forward to working with you again this year. Anyone else? Ms. Williams.
Ms. Urban, I'd like to echo Mr. Chair, Mr. Bright. Right. Chairman Sawyer's sentiments, but for myself, I truly do appreciate all of the hard work that you do for us. As an administrator, I know it's like herding cats of all varieties, and I appreciate the fact that you always manage to get us where we need to be, tell us all the information that we're supposed to have, and keep us on track, and that's a very big deal, and it is very much appreciated, and I thank you for all of your time and effort, and especially for this past year, for our new board and all of us new people, and for also bringing in Bee, you've done a wonderful job adding her into the mix and...
To Debbie Urban, my first year on this board, it was, it was a pretty isolated situation, and I think that you'll find in the Old Bridge Observer, when they ask, who gave you the most help, and I said it was Debbie Urban, because I, I had been in the school system for a long time, but I knew that I was in, on grounds that I was unfamiliar with, and I do want to thank you for all the support and help that you gave to me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Debbie, I must call you at, at the very minimum twice a day, and you always sound happy to hear from me. That makes me wonder, don't you need a vacation? She has really helped me more than I thought she ever could. She explained everything, not once or twice or ten times, and always sounded as if she was happy, just happy to do so. Well, I am so happy that you are still with us. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Debbie, I love you. You're an incredible person, and I just, your smile and grace and happiness and warmth that you bring to your job, and the, the depth of knowledge you bring from the incredible experience that you have combines into a very incredible person, beyond, on top of just who you are, and I, this board owes you an incredible amount, and thank you so much for all that you do, and I will, I will hope that the next item that we reappoint Bee, and I will just apply the same words to her, when we, whenever we call, they are more than happy to help and assist and go above and beyond, and I really appreciate both of you a lot, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Urban, you do so much for each one of us, and you have each one of us calling you, you have the division calling you, you have the superintendent coming to your office, and I know that can be a chore sometimes, sorry, it's the superintendent. But, but, you know, all, joking aside, I know that you have more than just all of us to take care of, you have all the responsibilities that are put on you by statute, and you carry it out with, as everybody said, such grace, and you have a tremendous amount that you have to take care of and you're responsible for, and I just want to thank you so much for everything you do for the division, for everything you do for all of us, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else? Mr. Brand.
Debbie, I want to, I want to thank you a lot, as someone that was definitely thrown into the fire back in September after our five-and-a-half-hour, 2:00 a.m. board meeting. You know, it was your wonderful, happy, I think you were kind of happy, you were a little bit tired, voice the next morning that helped set me on the right path, and I asked a lot of questions to you to just to try to figure things out, and every step of the way since, since late September, you've been an incredible asset to me, and I really appreciate that, and, and thank you for all you do. I, I want to kind of reiterate some of the words of others, you're definitely underappreciated as is Bee, and you do great things for all of us, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Anyone else? Mr. Wilk.
Debbie, Bee, you complete me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., Dr. Waltz.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to thank both Debbie and Bee for all your assistance and working together with the administration and the school board, and also just to make sure everybody understands the real facts, I'm sure whenever I appear in your office, it is the highlight of your day.
All right. With that, I'll call the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you. That'd been funny if it wasn't unanimous.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving right along, this one's going to be a little tougher. The appointment, appointment for the deputy, appointment for the deputy clerk, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint Bee Simpson as deputy clerk of the Prince William County School Board for 2017. The salary for the deputy clerk shall remain as budgeted.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Mr. Deutsch, thank you. Discussion, Ms. Williams.
Ditto for Bee, thank you, Bee. You are surely there every time Debbie has stepped away from her desk, if that ever happens, it's a rare occasion, but I do thank you for all of your support, especially here at the meetings, it's very much appreciated, and I'm very thankful that you're continuing on with us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I've known Bee in other capacities, and she was always very cheerful, I would walk through when I was a principal, and she was always there, she'd just chat with me, and we just had a good time having a conversation. I always knew that she was extremely competent, and she keeps me on my calendar, and I really do appreciate it, and she's very kind when she calls and she says, you are to be here, and next, you are to go here, and so I just really appreciate you, and I appreciate everything that you guys do, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Ralston.
Bee, I think I speak to you every morning. I'm probably one of the few people that cannot keep a calendar date for nothing in the world, but I call on you, and you sound cheerful, you sound happy, and I'm wondering, what is she drinking? Because it's early. So, I thank you so very, very much for all that you do, and I hope you continue to be happy in your job.
We don't need an investigation to what you're drinking, do we, Bee? It's water. Mr. Deutsch, then Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am actually in Diane's camp, and I get my orders at the start of the week, and she tells me where I'm going, and keeps my calendar straight, and I appreciate it. The holidays are a time for traditions, and sometimes we all watch movies over the holidays, and there is one movie that I watch religiously every Christmas, and that is the best Christmas movie, or maybe second-best, Elf. Elf has a secretary who works for a very challenging boss, and a very bubbly elf walks into the room one day and says, Deb, you have such a pretty face, you should be on a Christmas card.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Simpson, I want to thank you so much for always keeping us on track of where we're supposed to be and when, because, I mean, you even, even on weekends, when you don't need to send us something on a weekend, you do to make sure where we need to be on a Monday morning. You're always on top of us with the calendars, and both of you with the gentle reminders, and thank you so much. It's, our schedules get crazy, and I know many times I've called you and you said, Allison, how are you going to do all this? And thank you for also helping me to realize I need to have my priorities right, so thank you for everything you do for us.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. I'd like to know how, I'll go real quick, and then Mr. Brand. I'd like to know how I get on the gentle reminder category, because mine are a little more firm, so that, that'll be nice. Ms. Satterwhite, you got to tell me your secrets. But honestly, again, going back to what we said about Ms. Urban as well, the, the public doesn't necessarily know, you know, juggling eight, eight, eight board members with ninety-five schools, and honestly, the chairman who represents all of them, everyone else who represents one-seventh, but yet also meetings across the county that all board members need to go to, regardless of what magisterial district they're in, there are just so many moving parts that they have to keep in order for, for eight people that do this on a part-time basis, with families and jobs and everything else, and other things that jump into our life that have to change, that turn their day upside down, so it is a very, very difficult job that you, that you do extremely well, and so I thank you for your service to this board as well. And Mr. Brand.
Bee, similar to the words, you know, that I said for Debbie, I want, I want to thank you, you've been a great help to me, you know, since I started back in September. I do appreciate the calendar support as well, but I'm probably one of your all-stars, I'm usually pretty up to date on those things, but I, you know what, I still love getting them, I still love, you know, printing them out, having them, you know, as a source to know where I need to be in a certain time, and, and whenever I have a question, you're always quick with the follow, follow-up, so appreciate everything you do, everything Debbie does. Thank you, you've been great support, especially to me as a novice in the, in this role, I appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Bee, you're great, thank you.
Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to item ten point zero five, once my computer's not frozen, corporate charity bond, do we have a motion? Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board require a corporate charity bond in the amount of $10,000 for the clerk and the deputy clerk to the school board, conditioned upon the faithful performance and discharge of their duties, with a premium for such bonds paid for by the school board.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Ralston, thank you. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Item ten point zero six, times, dates, and locations for school board meetings for 2017. Motion? Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board establish the location of its regular school board meetings at 14-715 Bristol Road, Manassas, Virginia, on the first and third Wednesdays of the months of January through June and September and December. Closed-session meetings shall convene at 6:00, and public meetings shall convene at 7:00. A few adjustments will be made to accommodate spring break, graduation, the Virginia School Boards Association convention, and winter break.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Thank you. Just to be clear, Ms. Jessie, do you have any comments on this? I just want to say one thing, I know it's your motion, so I'll let you go first if you have any comments. There's one small addition to this, Ms. Urban and I talked about this, and I want to make, the board seems to be in consensus, the, the little bit, I think I've talked with Ms. Satterwhite about this as well, but we moved up the, the second meeting, with the late meeting in, in December this year, it's very similar next year, it's extremely late and close to Christmas, so we've added the phrase "winter break" to this motion compared to past years, I just want to make sure returning board members are aware of that, so it does give us that option, like we did, moving everything up and having essentially three meetings in November and only one in December, as opposed to, I think it would be December 20th this year, or, yeah, this year, and so we do have that, if we want to do that as a board, that is in there to give us that little bit of wiggle room, so we don't, we don't get too close to Christmas with that meeting, just like we did this year. I just wanted to bring that everybody's attention, didn't feel like we're sneaking one by you there. Mr. Deutsch.
Just a quick question, when are we, is the official list being published somewhere, or where does that get published and compiled with the adjustments?
Ms. Urban typically publishes that list, I'll let her answer that question.
I compiled that list in July to be published, beginning the first meeting in September, so I work with, with the school board and administration to set up the calendar of school board meetings.
Thank you. Further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Thank you. Moving right along to the superintendent's designee to attend school board meetings. Dr. Waltz, do you recommend here, or do we just do it? I want to make sure.
I recommend Ray Darlington.
Okay. I figured that was coming, thank you, Dr. Waltz. I'll make the motion that Ray Darlington Deputy Superintendent be appointed as the designee of the Division Superintendent Act to attend meetings of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
All right, and I'll make this final one here, that, this is, we are on item ten point zero eight, got to scroll down. Ms. Jessie, I feel bad, you're the one who always has to read these long motions. That the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments, I'll do it once a year, once a year. That the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments for the organizations committees as follows. Continue membership in the Virginia School Boards Association and renew membership for National School Boards Association for 2017. Elect Ms. Williams to serve as delegate to the Virginia School Boards Association Annual Convention in Williamsburg, Virginia on November 15th to 17th, 2017. Elect Ms. Ralston to serve as alternate to the Virginia School Boards Association Annual Convention in Williamsburg, Virginia on November 15th to 17th, 2017. Elect Ms. Ralston to serve as a delegate to the National School Boards Association Annual Convention in Denver on March 25th to 27th, 2017. Elect Ms. Williams to serve as alternate to the National School Boards Association Convention in Denver on March 25th to 27th, 2017. Appoint Mr. Wilk to... Appoint Mr. Wilk to serve as representative to the Northern Virginia Special Education Regional Board for 2017. Appoint Ms. Williams to serve as alternate to the Northern Virginia Special Education Regional Board for 2017. Appoint Ms. Jessie to serve as a representative to the National Alliance of Black School Educators for 2017. Appoint Ms. Ralston to serve as an alternate for the National Alliance of Black School Educators for 2017. Appoint Mr. Deutsch to serve as representative to the Prince William County and Schools' Joint Audit Committee for 2017. Appoint Mr. Brand to serve as the alternate to the Prince William County and Schools' Joint Audit Committee for 2017. Appoint Chairman Sawyers to serve as the representative to the Washington Area Boards of Education for 2017. Appoint Mr. Wilk to serve as the alternate to the Washington Area Boards of Education for 2017. Sorry, I scrolled too fast. Appoint Ms. Jessie to serve as representative to the Head Start Advisory Board for 2017. Appoint Ms. Satterwhite to serve as the representative for the School Health Advisory Board for 2017. Appoint Ms. Satterwhite and Mr. Wilk to serve on the Safe Schools Advisory Council for 2017. Appoint Chairman Sawyers and Mr. Brand to serve as representatives to the Prince William County Schools' Internal Audit Committee for 2017. And appoint Mr. Deutsch to serve as an alternate to the Prince William County Schools' Internal Audit Committee for 2017. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Like the second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Clicked on the wrong one. Brief discussion, I'll just say that ultimately how, so everyone knows how the process works, Ms. Urban sends out a message to the board and everybody kind of fills out what their kind of priorities are. A lot of people pick the same thing, so it's not always, it's not always an exact science trying to maneuver some of this and get everybody in the right spot, but we do the best we can. I try to give everybody their first pick, which isn't always possible and I don't think that was this year, but I know, you know, that other members certainly have their preferences, so I certainly take that into consideration when I make these appointments, but it's always a balancing act. So just want to kind of let everyone know how this is formulated. Okay, with that, those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
All right. Moving on to approval of the public meeting agenda. Motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Deutsch. I'm sorry. Hold on, I clicked on something, Mr. Deutsch. Not your fault. Go ahead, Mr. Deutsch. I'm sorry.
Point of order, we had two items requested for the December meeting, one item requested for the January meeting that weren't added. So what is the process for things being added to the agenda?
The process for adding to the agenda is that items can be added to the basically, I don't know what's the working agenda that we, the vice chairman and I go over and we ultimately determine what's in the superintendent, I'm sorry, the superintendent and the vice chairman and I go over and we determine what makes the agenda, as has been done in previous years, has been done and what is routinely done across the country and across the state, where the chairman and the vice chairman have authority to say what makes the agenda and what doesn't make the agenda. And then there is, there is like, for example, last meeting when Mr. Brand wanted to add the inauguration thing, I told him that it was because Ms. Jessie and I weren't able to review it in between when we had the meeting and those types of things. I did let him know that we would approve if he wanted to go ahead and try to, if the board was up to the idea that we could go ahead and allow that, for him to make that motion if it would pass, that we wouldn't stand in the way from it being added to the agenda. So that is ultimately how it can be done, but it is, that is the standard process.
Sure, but point of order, before, before about the fall, that wasn't the process and any request had to be honored per policy, so what changed?
Nothing changed. I mean, ultimately, the previous chairman ultimately kept things off the agenda as well. We just more formalized the policy to say that ultimately, again, and no different than came through in board training, when they told us in board training that all across the state that the chairman, the chairman and the superintendent can pose the agenda, we basically said the chairman, the superintendent, and the vice chairman can pose the agenda. So it's really no different than we clarified that policy along the way. So that's how the agenda is formulated.
Sure, but point of order, Mr. Chairman, what's stated in training doesn't matter, what matters is our bylaws.
No, I was using that as an example, Mr. Deutsch, just to let you know.
Right, but what's stated in our bylaws is what matters. So then, what does it take for a board member to put something on the agenda that either the chairman or the vice chairman disagree with?
It would take, it would take them to talk to the chairman and vice chairman and understand what it would make, no different than any, our policy is no different than any other district across the state.
Actually, it's wildly different.
It's not, but that, your point of order is taken and we'll move on. Does anybody else have any discussion? With that, I'll take a vote. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, got it. Those opposed? Deutsch and Satterwhite? And abstaining? I'm sorry. Mr. Brand, no. No, no worries.
The vote is five yes, three no. Deutsch, Satterwhite, and Brand. Motion passed.
Okay. Moving on, adoption of the consent agenda. Motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board, I'm sorry, no, that's right. Okay, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do we have a second?
Chairman, I second.
Ms. Ralston, thank you. Discussion. Ms. Williams. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to note for Black History Month, National Foreign Language Education Week, and National School Counseling Week, and School Principals Week, I just wanted to take some time out to recognize those things on the consent agenda and make sure I took time out to say thank you to all of our educators in whatever role that you play as we start the new year off, but especially to our principals. They are really the life, the lifeblood of the school and they are our formal face of the school and representation of who we are and they are some of the most important people in the building and just very much appreciated for the leadership role and your willingness to guide our youth. And I just wanted to make sure that I said thank you for that, as well as for our counselors. They take on just a tremendous workload, doing everything from helping students to pick classes to dealing with much more serious in-depth issues and I think that on occasion we just don't spend enough time appreciating those two groups and wanted to make sure that I said something in that nature and in addition to that, recognize our upcoming National Black History Month and we have our MLK Day on the 16th, is it 16th? 16th. And that's a wonderful event that kind of kicks it off the season for us and I just wanted to speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? Ms. Jessie.
A couple of things. One, I wanted to remind people that we have the Martin Luther King Day celebration on the 16th and all of you, everyone in this room should come. I think Dr. King would be pleased because our speakers range in age and nationality and I think that's what he really wanted. I received this letter and I just wanted to read it to the board because I just received it. It's very short and it says, "I want to thank Prince William County alumni chapter of Delta Sigma Theta for conducting this Martin Luther King Youth Oratorical Contest. My son, Ibram Rogers of Stonewall High School, won the contest in 2000. Writing and giving his speech for this contest has had a profound effect on his life. It allowed him to internalize the impact of our people's history on the future of this nation. I believe this contest motivated him to study African-American studies at Florida A&amp;M University and to obtain a PhD in African-American Studies from Temple University. He is now a professor of history at the University of Florida. In addition, a few months ago, he won the National Book Award in nonfiction for his second book, Stamped Out From The Beginning: The Definite History of Racist Ideas in America. He changed his name after he was married in 2013. He has also been nominated for the 2016 NAACP Image Award for Outstanding Literacy Work of Nonfiction. Thank you very, so very much for providing a vehicle for students to learn and vocalize the importance of our history as it relates to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It makes me, it makes more of a difference than you realize." So I received that and I also, on the Career Technical Education Month, I walked in and Ms. Ross and I received this from the welding group and I think this thing should go on Shark Tank or something, but it is a salt and pepper shaker holder with spoons and it was designed by the welders and students over at Potomac High School and they sent a card to say, "Thank you, Mrs. Jessie, so much for your support of our welding program at Potomac. Please enjoy this gift that we made." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Further discussion? Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to give a shout-out on a couple of items here that are very important. Career and Technical Education Month, which Ms. Jessie just mentioned. College is pushed and encouraged and that's a good thing, but college isn't for everyone and there are incredible opportunities that having career and technical training can do for students. Those skill sets are desperately needed in our country, in this part of the, of our Commonwealth and the kind of jobs and doors that it opens up to have certifications in a number of these fields and do it without college debt is pretty incredible and this is definitely something that I'm proud that we keep encouraging and the more we do, the better. Also, School Counseling Week, our counselors are incredible people and the types of things that they are there, available on a regular basis to help our students with is incredible and they deserve really all the praise for the hard and tireless work that they do. And then finally, 12.07, School Principals Week, I want to give a shout-out to all the principals in my district, but then particularly for the high school principals, Tim Healy, Neil Beach, Dave Cassidy, they are working very hard and honestly, they're almost mini college presidents with the responsibility that they have for the number of students, the number of operations. I was able to tour Hilton sometime this December, right as classes were closing and got to see the numerous different programs they have going on and the things that our principals are juggling are pretty incredible. So shout-out to all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Anyone else? Mr. Wilk.
Yeah, I was going to mention this during Board Matters, but it actually pertains with National Career and Technical Education Month. Obviously, I'm a major supporter of CTE. My father was a welder for 37 years for a foreign motor company in Michigan. I realize the importance of the trades and I'm always looking for more opportunities to expand. I do want to thank, I did have the pleasure over the Christmas break of going to the IBW Training Facility in Landen, Maryland. Amazing, state-of-the-art facility when it comes to the work that they're doing to train a young apprenticeship program with their electricians. A lot of stuff, talking about possibly whether it's applicable to try to bring it into one of our high schools and something like that or expand it into more of the schools. I think it would be a great opportunity for us and I plan on working with Mr. Mulgrew and my leadership team at Potomac High School to see about opportunities, further expansion in that building.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Ralston.
Just to speak to the same one, 12.07. I have great principals in my district in the Absco, but they're also backed up by great teachers. They also have great custodians and cafeteria workers. So for me, it's the great school week. The principal is the leader, but if you have nobody to follow, you're just walking alone. And they actually have people with them, standing side by side. So I am more prouder of all of my people that educate all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Mr. Brand.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyers. I just want to also make a mention about School Principals Week as well. It's actually a career path I considered back in 2005 and 2006. I went through an educational leadership program through George Mason and was headed in that direction, but of course, life took a detour and ended up going in a different direction. But I was lucky as a teacher in Prince William County Schools, back at Woodbridge High School, to have some incredible principals to work for there. And I've been lucky as a parent to also, you know, have crossed paths and be able to work for an advisory council capacity with some great principals as well. They are hard workers. They spend many hours in the school day, just like the teachers, and, you know, from sunup to sundown, you know, they have to deal with budgets, they have to deal with diverse personalities, they have to deal with people like me, demanding parents that definitely have high expectations, but they do an incredible job of balancing all those balls up in the air and still getting the job done. So we're lucky to have many great ones in Prince William County and we are lucky to have many great ones in the Princeville District and I want to thank them for all they do.
Thank you, Ms. Brand. Ms. Jessie.
The Principals Week, and I failed to follow up on that. You know, I was a principal for 20 years and I've met so many principals and these are people who, when you walk into that building, you don't know what's going to happen and you're just looking for moments of the day where you can sit down and perhaps do some of the paperwork. There's an enormous amount of work that's required of them. When Jarcelin was a principal, I could always call in Sunday afternoon and she was always there. And there were other people who worked their weekends. It is an enormous job and I just want to give a shout-out to every principal in Prince William County. I understand and know how much work is involved and I just want to say thank you very, very much for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. And I'll be very brief. I'll mention the CTE, the Career and Technical Education as well. I'd love to see us continue to develop those as much as we can on this board and hopefully get our students ready to graduate so they're ready to build the next school because we'll be building here for a while so they can leave, they can graduate and have a job building our next school. I think that would be a wonderful, a wonderful goal, even if it's idealistic for every school board to have. School counselors as well, they have an overwhelming job, they have an overwhelming workload. They sometimes are the only people that a student can talk to and they have, they have the enormous weight of the world on their shoulders at times and they're, I don't understand how they do their job because I couldn't, so I respect them tremendously. And then one that nobody else touched on, but I'll be very brief, National Athletic Training Month. As a former, I was a pitcher, so I can't call myself an athlete, but as a former athlete, I can certainly tell you that having a trainer on-site and having someone near you to be able to evaluate injuries, especially at the developing ages of high school, when those injuries can, if not taken care of properly and sometimes immediately, can nag you for the rest of your life. So our certified athletic trainers have a tough job as well and their hard work is certainly not lost on me or this board, so thank you very much. With that, we'll take the vote. Those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Sorry, it's a little slow today, Ms. Urban. It's not my fault, I promise. All right, we are on to citizens' comment time. We have about 17 people signed up, signed up ahead of time, about eight people, looks like somebody's crossed off, about eight people that signed up at the door. We'll get through as many as we possibly can. Policy allows for 30 minutes on the front end. I know we also have some boundary issues that are important to the board as well, so we want to make sure that we have time to hear those as well. So we'll get through as many as we possibly can and then if we can't get through them all, then we'll continue at the end of the meeting per policy. So I will call the first 10 speakers up. You're welcome to come take a seat here in the front row and we'll go from there. Remember when you're called up that everyone has three minutes to speak. I'll run the timer here from the computer. You'll see it above our heads. At 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow, reminding you to wrap it up and at zero seconds, it'll reminding you to wrap it up. And at zero seconds, it'll turn red, reminding you that your time is up. Please use proper decorum at all times when addressing the board, and I will call the order. So our first speaker is Reginald Lipscomb, then Steve Bender, Starr Demery, Troy Nolan, Mark Rafa, Riley O'Casey, Rhonda Jackson, Yolanda Thomas, Shirley, Dan, and Dan House, and Emmett Fletcher. Those are our first 10 speakers. One second, sir. Let me get oriented here, and Ms. Williams poking at me. Mr. Lipscomb, your time will begin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the two boundary proposals, number four and number six, put forth in Eastern Prince William County Rezoning Committee, and I'm requesting the board to consider the amendment to not rezone existing Henderson families out of the school to Montclair or Patty. I reside in the Cardinal Point subdivision. I'm the vice president of our community HOA and have three children, one who is currently a first grader, and two hopeful Huskies. The other two, we're hoping they're going to be at Henderson in 2017 and 19. My wife has provided comments against the proposed rezoning at the last community hearing. However, neither proposal four or six took hers and other Henderson's parents' comments into consideration. I'm not here to disparage Montclair or Patty. I'm sure the parents and teachers, as well as students, of those schools have a great affinity for them and would welcome new students. But the facts are Henderson has higher rating on, it's great school, has consistently been designated the School of Excellence, and the students have higher test scores. Besides those facts, which I'm sure you're already aware of, I would like to share with you my family's personal reasons for wanting to stay at Henderson. Even before enrolling this year, we attended the 2015 Spring Scoops to meet other families and learn about the school. Since the beginning of the school year, we have attended Family STEM Night, attended the PTCO Heroes Party, attending the PTCO Winter Craft Fair, volunteered at Fall Field Day, and the Class Holiday Party in December. We've invested our time in order to build relationships with the Henderson teachers and staff, as well as the parents, in order to create a sense of community. Our request for you to consider keeping us zoned to Henderson is a request for you to keep us together with our community and with the support system that comes with it. Henderson offers a STEM curriculum, which aligns our son's interest in hands-on learning style. Our son attended a STEM-based kindergarten last year and moved specifically to the school to offer that same focus, and made the transition a lot easier. Rezoning our community to Montclair Elementary, which has a different learning focus, may dampen his zest for learning. Since the beginning of the school year, while we have been working to build relationship, our son likewise has been doing the same and has established good friendships. He has grown accustomed to being the quality Husky and a leader of the pack. We ask that you do not take this away from him or other children. Rezoning our community to Montclair not only means a new building, new teachers, a new way of learning, but also losing the day-to-day interaction with the friends. In addition to our desire to stay at Henderson and be Huskies, my family and I have several questions that I request the board to consider when evaluating the current proposals as requested in the amendment. The problem the rezoning committee was trying to solve relates to overcrowding of schools.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Bender. Steve Bender, sorry. Mr. Bender, used to calling you up. Mr. Bender.
Thank you. My address is on file. Dr. Waltz, members of the board, Chairman Sawyers. After Ms. Brand and Mrs. Satterwhite requested that the clerk issue the notice for a special meeting to be held tonight, the chairman once again blew up on Facebook insisting they didn't have the right to act independently of his call, and that they didn't have a quorum, and that there would be no meeting. First, they're right. Policy 131 addresses special meetings as follows. Special meetings of the Prince William County School Board may be held by the decision of the board in session, comma, upon the call of the chairman, comma, or by the request of two or more board members. As the English teacher among you can tell you, this is a compound sentence consisting of three separate independent clauses that are joined by commas and by the coordinating conjunction or. As such, these are independent, standalone requirements, and they're not dependent upon each other for implementation. One, you guys can vote and call a special meeting. Two, the chairman unilaterally can call a special meeting and issue the call. Three, two or more members can make the request. This last clause does not say request that the chairman call a meeting. It only says request. Mr. Brand, Ms. Satterwhite so requested, and the clerk appropriately issued the notice for a properly-called meeting. Second, the issue of the quorum. The chairman also claimed they didn't have a quorum. Seriously? More evidence that the chairman needs to revisit the vote on appointing a full-time parliamentarian and may need more remedial training on procedure. Quorum can't be determined days in advance of a meeting. At best, he could announce that he and three other members have colluded to not remain for the special meeting, and therefore he was confident they would not be able to get a quorum. But he can't rule on the quorum days in advance. If four of you get up and walk out tonight on the hundreds of students sitting in trailers, if you walk out on those second graders who have to go outside to go to the bathroom, if you walk out on a mere discussion of how you could possibly come to an agreement with the county board to add hundreds of additional seats without touching the budget, then you are walking out on your sworn responsibilities as a member of this board, and you are doing it for partisan reasons while sitting on a nonpartisan board. On a related note, I've come to the conclusion I owe Mr. Sawyers an apology. Irritated with his Facebook comments over the weekend, I posted on Facebook a joke on the our school site about Marx and Marxism, Lenin, Stalin, Sawyers and Sawyerism. They're all the same. Mr. Chairman, I apologize for the implication of socialism. It was pointed out to me later that that wasn't right, that a political philosophy that focuses on a centralized autocratic government headed by a dictatorial leader, severe economic and social regimentation, and forcible suppression of all opposition, as evidenced by, you can't put it on the agenda, is not a definition of socialism, but of fascism. I apologize for improperly linking you to socialism. Members, tonight, don't walk out. Walk into a workable agreement with the board of county supervisors that begins with a discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Our next speaker is Starr Demery. Starr?
Good evening. I too am here to speak about the proposed Plan Four and Plan Six. I started at the bottom. I grew up poor, minority female, so there's not much more lower. Usually, people outrank you or above you starting like that. But I worked hard to give myself a better life and ensure that my children, too, would be better off than I started. I put myself through grad school and undergraduate school. I've been in the Army Reserves on and off active duty for the last almost 20 years now, and I'm a successful government employee when I'm not currently on orders. Coming from Cleveland, Ohio, which is a pretty poor, uneducated, and segregated city, I was happy to be able to achieve what I've given myself and what I've been able to give my children. My husband and I took our house hunting eight years ago very seriously when we purchased our home, and we wanted to make sure that we were in an area that would be beneficial to our children. So we were happy to be able to find a perfect house right across the street from a great school in the county. So you can understand my disappointment to find out that we're going to be rezoned to a school that's not nearly as good as Henderson is. I think that it's unfair of you all to move us out of a school based off socioeconomic status. It's very clear to me that our homes are not worth as much as the new homes that have been built that you're trying to accommodate for. If it's overcrowding, that's the problem. I understand that. I wouldn't expect you to send kids to an overpopulated school, but I also wouldn't expect you to displace me and my children when I bought in the neighborhood specifically to ensure that they could go to a school that I was happy and content with. You're forcing me to make a choice that I don't want to make. I like where I live. I love my neighborhood. I love my community, and I don't want to lose it or leave it. But I value my children's education. And I'm going to be forced to make that tough choice, and I would ask that you help me make the right choice, and you help me stay where I'm currently located by accepting an alternative plan to the two that you're voting on. I'm told, and because my children are only four, I don't know all the facts, but there seems to be enough room for the inclusion of the overcrowded population as well as our children that are already zoned for that school. So I would ask that you take that into consideration before you displace our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Troy Nolan. Troy?
Hi, folks. My name is Troy Nolan. I don't have prepared comments today. I'm here because I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated that a new high school is going to be built. When its doors open, according to your numbers, it will already be overcapacity. I'm frustrated that the society that we live in, which is one of its founding principles, is the First Amendment and free speech, that that is being suppressed by the chairman of our elected officials here, that he is preventing discussion from this from happening in an open environment. I am particularly distressed in that the parliamentary maneuvers, parliamentary maneuvers, are being engaged to prevent this discussion. This is not about politics. Well, technically, I guess it is. If you go to the root of the word politics, it's polis of the people. Anytime there's people involved, there will be politics. But this is not about partisan politics. This is about continuing a discussion. This is about a discussion that needs to be held to respond to the Board of County Supervisors, not with a permanent commitment, but merely to keep the discussion going. When you're offered $20 million more dollars to solve some problems that you guys are dealing with, turning it down and closing your ears and not continuing the discussion is irresponsible, is borderline negligent. So I ask that you continue the discussion today, that you allow discussion amongst yourselves, that you allow discussion with the Board of County Supervisors, and maybe, just maybe, you guys can find a path that can help students, that can ease overcrowding, that can relieve a failed plan for a new school. I yield my time back to the remainder of the citizens.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Rafa. Mark?
Thank you. Members of the board, I'm here tonight to discuss the resolution passed by the Board of County Supervisors, and it is time for this school board to meet and discuss a resolution passed by the Board of County Supervisors that could provide additional funding to our schools. The bickering must stop. Solutions must be offered. The county supervisors have fulfilled their legal obligation to fund the schools per the revenue-sharing agreement. The proposed additional funds are needed to ease overcrowding plaguing our schools and impacting our schoolchildren. The county supervisors are accountable to the taxpayers. This school board is not. The county supervisors are listening to the taxpayers. This school board is not. This school board needs to start exerting necessary leadership. Whining and complaining are not qualities of leadership. When the chairman-at-large goes on social media and whines of draconian cuts implemented by the county supervisors and complains of underfunding schools, he is not leading our school system. He is not offering solutions. Chairman-at-large Sawyers has a choice to make. Determine a way for the proposed resolution that has passed to be a success for our schoolchildren, or refuse the funding. The choice is yours, Chairman-at-large Sawyers. Additionally, Chairman-at-large Sawyers has another choice to make, and that is to either lead or leave, and I support the latter. It's time to recall Chairman-at-large Sawyers and do what is right for the schoolchildren of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafa. Our next speaker is Riley O'Casey. Ms. O'Casey?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, board members. Dr. Waltz, my name is Riley O'Casey, and my address is on file. Happy New Year. PWEA would like to thank those board members who attended our legislative forum last night. Forty dedicated people came together for significant discussions centered around one thing, one subject, the students of Prince William County schools. And though the woes of public education were not solved last night, I observed school board members, county supervisors, and members of the General Assembly talking, listening, and collaborating to improve education. If this can be done for one hour, imagine the changes we can make if we all took the time to truly listen to our colleagues so that we will never forget why we are here. Right now, we face an uphill battle in education with very little we can control at the federal and state levels. However, we can control what happens on the local level, and we must be strong, cohesive, and tenacious for our students. The current battle between both boards, originally focusing on students, unfortunately has now moved away from the needs of the district and the students. This board must work together, stop arguing, and focus less on personal feelings and more on what is important for our students. The change of Policy 131 is silencing thousands of your constituents by not allowing fellow school board members to contribute to the board agenda. 61,999 of my fellow citizens in the Gainesville District are being silenced. 67,000 in the Brunsfield District, 64,000 in the Coles District, 59,000 in the Neapsco District, 62,000 in the Potomac District, and 63,000 in the Woodbridge District have been silenced because of this policy change. Are we being heard? What's wrong with the conversation? Why fight to silence thousands for the political agendas of just a few? Please listen to each other and remember that you were elected to represent the students. And I've given Mrs. Urban to pass on to you an article called "The Seven Signs of Effective School Board Members." It's informative. I encourage you all to read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Casey. Our next speaker is Rhonda Jackson. Rhonda?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, and Dr. Waltz. My name is Rhonda Jackson, and my address is on file. Picture this, an 11th grade student on his standard diploma track, African-American male, about six feet tall, slim, handsome, always smiling and respectful. In the classroom, he's becoming more of a self-advocate, and he is described as one who works very hard and does what is asked of him. He gives his all and passes his classes, but has never passed a SOL. Since ninth grade, he has retaken each SOLs two to three times with accommodations, yet continues to fail. His self-esteem and positive attitude is being affected. Can you imagine his disappointment? He has a disability that has been described from being intellectual, specific learning, and other health impairment. The title of his disability doesn't matter, the characteristics do, and they include slower-than-average processing speeds, along with short and long-term memory deficits. His disabilities affect him in assessing SOLs, yet we are expecting this student, my son, and others like him to remember a year's worth of information to pass SOLs. Now picture this. Virginia DOE's Virginia SOL Assessment Build-a-Table statistical data for Prince William County that includes participation count for all races, genders of students with disabilities from ninth through 12th grade for end-of-year courses over the past five years for alternative SOL testings for VMAST and VSEP. These alternatives allow students on his standard diploma to obtain SOL credits when students are unable to access the SOL. The math VMAST has a count of less than 10 people, and the reading VMAST, a count of zero on average per school year. VSEP, which also offers alternative testing in all subject areas, was zero. Prince William County has never successfully applied for alternative assessment for VSEP until October 2016, when I called VDOE to understand the process to alternative assessments. Prior to this, the only solutions offered for students with disabilities who are on his standard diploma track that are able to pass their classes but fail the SOLs are either, one, just keep trying to pass the SOLs; two, just stay till 21 and keep trying to pass; or, three, consider lowering the diploma options if not staying till 21. My desire is that Prince William County Assessment Office, the Office of Special Education, the Special Education Advisory Council, the Parent Resource Center, school counselors and administrators over IAPs in both middle school and high school, and special education teachers and case managers understand that when a child keeps failing SOLs because of their disabilities and can pass the class, let's discuss alternative SOL testings for graduation starting in eighth grade. Eight administrators from the county attended DOE's training in August for administrators' updated training for state assessment options for students with disability, and didn't use the train-the-trainer concept DOE expects from each division. Our special education teachers don't know what they have never done, seen, or have been misinformed about, and as a result, our children aren't as successful. We have to do a better job in being more prepared, informed, and following through for all students, and finding the best solutions and providing a world-class education. And if that means I have to continue to call VOE to understand the process to push the agenda for a better solution, I will. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yolanda Thomas. Yolanda?
Chairman, Prince William County School Board members, Superintendent Waltz, my name is Yolanda Thomas. My address is on file. I was perplexed this evening. I had a call earlier from the school system addressing what I would be speaking about today. I took it from perplexed to saying that there's nothing done by coincidence. I am a woman of faith, and so I know that my time here is valuable to speak on behalf of these students. There's two key issues with overcrowding here in Prince William County, specifically on the east side. The teaching-to-student ratio, it affects student learning as well as discipline applied in the classroom. Overcrowding significantly impacts the learning curve of those students. Whereas you may have student learning on one side, you may have discipline area on the other side. Like the SOL example she just spoke of, you have to take into account how much time is taken from this overcrowding, this compressed environment, and the student is not really learning. Safety concerns. The example with the Marhamsko Hill outside bathrooms. Has there been an escape plan to find the vent of high winds or extreme rain where the students or staff may find themselves outside during the transition from the bathroom back to the school structure where identified safe zone has already been established? You've got to think about, these things can be picked up, and these children... You've got to think about, these things can be picked up, and these children, the staff, lives are touched because we do not have the funding, or the funding is not accurately applied, to expand the buildings to give a child, a student, a safe place. Has a cost-benefit analysis been performed for these two issues? Have you looked at the decline or the trend of the test scores for the teacher-to-student ratio? Have you associated the cost with expanding the current structure? And have you properly done a disaster recovery plan? In addition, there is a incident or an increased probability that there's lower morale among the students and teachers, whereas the pride felt when two teachers and assistant staff have to move their students outside. It's cold out here, or maybe there's a medical emergency or any other type of concern. Simply said, more effective uses can be defined for the monies needed to improve the condition of overcrowding in Prince William County for its elementary schools versus those same funds for a redesign estimated over $16 million. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shirley Van House. Shirley?
And that would be Van House, like what you drive. Good evening. My name is Shirley Van House, and I'm here tonight to discuss my concerns regarding the upcoming boundary changes to Henderson and Fitzgerald Elementary Schools. Not only am I a owner of property, I'm also a mother, and I am also a teacher who's had the opportunity to work in several of Prince William County schools, from River Oaks to Fitzgerald, Henderson, and Rosa Park Elementary Schools. I'm very concerned with the number of students who currently live within the Fitzgerald Elementary boundaries who are about to potentially be redistricted to Henderson Elementary School. You are about to potentially move all of the single-family, upper-income homes out of the Fitzgerald boundary. The Cardinal Grove Luxury Homes reside directly across the street from Fitzgerald. You're also about to move the Cardinal Glen neighborhood that backs up to the Fitzgerald property? These students potentially are going to be bussed for up to two miles to Henderson Elementary. Wouldn't that be considered reverse busing? I taught for two years at Fitzgerald Elementary School, so I know that there's a high percentage of culturally diverse and economically disadvantaged students who attend Fitzgerald. It is a Title I school. When you make these boundary changes, you potentially will be creating an inequitable economic balance of the families within this school population by moving so many non-disadvantaged students out of Fitzgerald. The Hybridge subdivision has been a part of the Henderson Husky family for over 25 years. We were there to give support when not one but two principals fought their battles with cancer. We have helped lead Girl Scout and Boy Scout troops at this school. We have volunteered at Spring Scoop and book fairs and other school functions. Our families have helped to shape and build this elementary school into the school of excellence that it is today. Please consider leaving all the students currently attending Henderson at Henderson, and fill the 170-plus seats that will be available in the fall with students from neighborhoods who are geographically closer to Henderson. I ask you to please reconsider these boundary changes of Henderson and Fitzgerald Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emmett Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the School Board, Dr. Walts. Happy New Year. I'm here to talk about the 13th High School, since we have revisited that issue, and it looks like it's going to come up for the fourth time, or trying to come up for the fourth time. And we have went through this as citizens three times. It's like the old shell game. It's the same design, but you're just changing the name. And as citizens here in Prince William County, we realize what's being done. And we've seen this, and each time, it has failed. And right now, we're talking about bringing it back. The last election with the newly-elected president said, "Make America Great Again." But, you know, when I look at the schools like Marumsco Hill compared to some of the schools on the western end, is that part of those kids that's going to the outdoor bathroom? I mean, who is he talking about "Make America Great Again"? Prince William County is the 12th richest county in this country, and we're talking about kids going to outdoor toilets in the snow. I think some of the School Board members should go to outdoor toilets in the snow when they come up here for a meeting. Let's be for real. Let's give all our students here in Prince William County an equal opportunity, equal education, to get a quality education, not disparity that we have. Let's don't make it a political agenda. Let's do the right thing. Initially, when we started talking about the design of the 13th High School, the cost was like $125 million. And now, I think the proposed cost is around $160 million. And now, the Board of County Supervisors is involved. A lot of the people I spoke to on the eastern part of the county, they would like to have been here tonight to discuss their concerns about these outdoor toilets. But a lot of them don't have public trans-- they don't have transportation, and they can't catch public transportation. And we say, "Let's be fair for the kids." But are we talking about the kids on the other side? Or we're talking about the kids that go to the outdoor toilets? So, my thing on this, let's address the eastern end with those toilets, because we will be back. That will be one of the topics that we will bring up every School Board. And with the third, if this comes up again with the fourth time trying to name this school, which has been camouflaged, the design, we encourage you to vote it down. And if the Board of County Supervisors disagree with us, we'll vote them out, too.
Thank you. We have a little extra time in the 30-minute window. I'd probably get two or three more speakers in. Our next three speakers are Kristin Jacobson, Noah Jacobson, and Richard Jesse. And we'll go from there, next three speakers. Sorry, I should have called you before Mr. Fletcher spoke. But Kristin Jacobson, Noah Jacobson, and Richard Jesse are next three speakers.
It was past Noah Jacobson's bedtime. Does that mean I get six minutes?
Unfortunately, it does not.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. First of all, thank you very much for this opportunity for us to be able to speak out. I'm speaking about the redistricting, the new boundaries as well, on behalf of one of the parents of an Alka-Kahn student as well. I am representing his tribe at Alka-Kahn. They have tribes, and we are part of the family there. And so, as you can imagine, we'd really like to stay at Alka-Kahn. I'm just going to get right down to the numbers, because at the last boundary meeting, that seemed to be the main focus on why we are looking at moving some of the children from our neighborhood in Greenwich out to Belmont. And when I'm looking at these percentages, they don't change at all. The LEP, the percent of economically disadvantaged, and the percent of minority, which, again, were the three highlighted points, don't change at all across the entire Board. And interestingly enough as well, when you look at Belmont and Alka-Kahn with both of the plans that are going to be proposed later, it doesn't affect-- it doesn't affect the numbers enough for us to feel like we should break up our community, to be honest. If we're looking at numbers and we're making decisions based on that, it just doesn't make any sense as to why we're taking our community and taking our children away from the family and the tribes and what they've built there at Alka-Kahn Elementary. And also, if we're looking at the capacity issue here, now we have, instead of, in this instance, one school that's overcapacity, we have now two schools that are overcapacity. And again, if you're looking at the Alka-Kahn numbers, the overcapacity percentages are not changing by very much at all. And I know that one of the goals was to get rid of the trailers, but I also understand that Alka-Kahn is the oldest school, oldest elementary school in Prince William County, and so it doesn't really leave a lot for expansion. I will say, I do respectfully disagree with the fact that we should get rid of trailers, because I went to a school that had trailers, and I feel like I turned out just fine. But I also know that it's really the people and the leadership that make up that school, so I don't care. And I know that my kid doesn't care, and his classmates and my fellow parents and their kids don't care where they have to go, as long as it's within Alka-Kahn, it's within that leadership and with that community and that just incredible atmosphere that's obviously, through the numbers, delivering the results of our kids getting a fine education. So I just implore you, and at this point, begging you, to reconsider moving Greenwich out of Alka-Kahn Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker during this portion of Citizens' time will be Mr. Jesse. Richard?
My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Walts, and members of the Board. I just want to talk to you a few minutes about the comments I've heard over Citizens' time about the Chair and the Vice Chair having authority to set the agenda. When I look at the United States Senate, when I look at the House of Representatives, when I look at the State Senate down in Richmond, when I look at the delegates, House of Delegates in Richmond, when I look at the County Board of Supervisors, every single one of them, agendas are set by the senior person of the ruling party. That is no different than what is done here. It was no different than what was done when my wife got on the Board, the Republican control, and they ruled. So I understand your frustration, but that's the way the politics are run in this country. Now, when you talk about bipartisan, you look at situations where you have-- I remember down in Richmond, a senator went to a meeting up or to an event up in Washington, and the fellow members took advantage of his absence so that they could run through a vote and get it. Pete Canlin, when Corey Stewart was out of town, took advantage of the fact and ran an issue through that he had promised not to do. So that stuff goes on. It's not always right, but, you know, don't say that, you know, this is something new. It's almost like we're learning it from you. When the last Board had the opportunity to appoint my wife to the School Board, they had already named a school after her, or wing of the school after her. She had national recognition, and that Board decided they did not want her and put another Republican on the Board. She defeated him. When Mrs. Ramirez had to leave the Board because she moved out of town, who was a Democrat, that Board did not replace her with a Democrat. They replaced her with Steve Keen. So again, don't tell me that you guys were not partisan, because you were. You know, the County Board of Supervisors, they have four or five years now had cut the tax rate. If they give the school system the money that they agreed to initially without cutting the tax rate, we wouldn't be in this problem that we are in now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse. Moving on to Item 14.01, the Student Housing Elementary School Attendance Area Recommendations, 2017-18, Potomac Shores Elementary School. Mr. Gaffeler, I know you've been waiting anxiously. This is your item.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the School Board, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, I am here to introduce the Potomac Shores Elementary School Boundary Planning Committee Recommendations. The Boundary Committee has demonstrated a commitment to supporting the integrity of Regulation 264-2. Their collaboration set a model for community involvement. It is my honor to acknowledge the time and expertise of these dedicated parents. If there are any of them here tonight, I would like them to stand and be recognized. Here with me tonight is Dr. Matthew Cartledge, Supervisor for the Planning Office of Facility Services.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the School Board, and Dr. Walts. It is a pleasure to be here this evening to discuss with you all the recommendations that the Eastern Elementary Boundary Planning Committee has provided for your consideration. I'll begin the presentation with a brief discussion on the current and projected school utilization rates for those schools affected by the proposed boundary changes. Then I'll move on to mention the future capital improvements scheduled for the Greater Route One and Cardinal Drive corridors. Subsequently, there will be an overview of the boundary planning process, immediately followed by a presentation of the boundary recommendations being put forth by this Boundary Planning Committee. As mentioned, the presentation will first shift its focus towards the existing schools in the Greater Route One and Cardinal Drive corridors and their respective capacity utilization rates. On the screen now is a series of maps, one followed by the other, of the northern section of our scope and then the southern section. The map presented demarcates the current attendance areas for the schools likely to be affected by the opening of the Potomac Shores Elementary School, the Kilby Replacement School, and then the construction of an eight-room addition at Neapsco Elementary, and ten-room additions each at Henderson and Belmont. Presented before you are the projections that our office compiles every fall, and I would like to take just a brief moment to discuss the program capacity that is listed on the table in front of you. This is a deviation from last year, when we had a planning capacity for elementary schools. The planning capacity assumed 24 students per regular-sized classroom, and then there was additional capacity garnered from resource rooms at the rate of 10 students per resource room. The capacity metric had its shortcomings. It did not accommodate for space-specific programs such as the K-3 class-size reduction grant, the space required by the Virginia PK Initiative, and Head Start. So based on your instruction, we, as a team, were to develop a revised metric called program capacity. So the metric in front of you more accurately reflects the true capacity and the true utilization With that being said, I would like to direct your attention specifically to the projected rates at Alka-Kahn Elementary next year for the 2017-18 school year at 154.2% of capacity. Williams Elementary is close to that at 152.1%. Marumsco Hills, Potomac View, and Vaughn Elementary Schools are each approximately at 137% of capacity. Among these 18 existing schools, as you have heard some this evening during Citizens' comment time, a number of portable classrooms are being leveraged to offer instructional space for the students at each of these schools based on the specific educational programs being offered. Among these 18 schools, there are 80 portable classrooms. Over the next three years, over $158 million is being allocated to fund projects to house elementary students on the eastern part of Prince William County. The capital improvements in total will add approximately 3,500 additional seats, permanent seats, to these schools. Our student enrollment projections are suggesting that these additional seats are-- Our student enrollment projections are suggesting that these additional seats are not going to be adequate to fully house all the students that we are anticipating to be generated as more and more developments are being constructed along the Route One corridor. For this reason, in 2021, in the Approved Capital Improvements Program, it is calling for an additional elementary school to be built in the Cherry Hill area. This is in response to the continued build-out of the Potomac Shores community as well as the other developments currently building in that immediate area. Speaking of building, both schools are being constructed and are on schedule, and they will be ready for the start of the 2017-18 school year. On the top of the monitor now, we have the Potomac Shores Elementary School and architectural rendering on the right of it of what it is likely to look like upon completion. The bottom half of the monitor is now showing the Kilby Elementary Replacement School, and you can see how somehow they have managed to squeeze an entire elementary school on the same site as where students are receiving their education right now. So we really tip our hats to the architects and new construction for being able to make this possible. Again, on the right, we have a architectural rendering of what the school will look like upon completion. The presentation will now shift its focus towards the Boundary Planning Process, and as some of you might remember from the community meetings, we'll go through this just for the sake of being thorough. The Code of Virginia gives a public school division the power and the authority to utilize pupil assignments for its schools. The Boundary Planning Process is then governed by School Board Policy 264, and that's in concert with Regulation 264-2. I'll discuss this in a little bit greater detail on the next slides. School Board Policy 264 provides for the creation of a Boundary Planning Committee when boundaries are being adjusted for elementary and middle schools. The committee assists in soliciting public input, and our committee did just this, through a variety of media, conversations in the public, social media, email, and phone calls. The committee was also instrumental in developing additional boundary plans. Those two that are being presented this evening are the creation of the committee. Its members utilized two community meetings. These were held on November 22 at Potomac High School and subsequently on December 6 at Freedom High School. The committee's role in this process concluded with the submission of its final report to the school board for its consideration. It should be noted that school boundaries are ultimately based on the need to provide for instructional effectiveness and the health, safety, and general welfare of all of our students. Regulation 264-2 provided guidance to the committee when it was drafting its boundary plan proposals. Each boundary plan attempted to balance the enrollments at the affected schools within plus or minus 15% of the total capacity utilization for the whole area and the project. It also seeks to minimize the number of times that a specific geographic area is reassigned at a specific level. So if elementary school boundaries were adjusted recently, it seeks to not reassign the same neighborhood at the elementary level again. Each boundary plan also attempts to facilitate the efficient transport of students, avoid splitting small neighborhoods, improve the geographic progression of communities, in other words, improve the progression from elementary to middle and onto high school. Lastly, each boundary plan attempts to consider the demographic balance. The committee considered three demographic variables, and those were mentioned earlier in by one of the speakers during Citizens' Comment Time. The first one on each of our tables that we provide for a boundary plan proposal will have the percentage of limited English proficiency students. This is the group of students who qualify for English speakers of other languages services. We also provide the percentage of economically disadvantaged students per the proposed boundary plan, and these are the students who qualify for free or reduced-price lunch. Lastly, we also provide the percentage of minority students, and this is the percentage of students who self-identify as non-white. Awareness of these data provides for the drawing of boundaries that embraces diversity among all of the schools in the division. At this time, the responsibilities of the Boundary Committee are summarized on this slide, and I would just like to extend a thank you on behalf of the Office of Facility Services for the number of evenings that these individuals donated to this process. There were five non-public meetings, two public meetings, and each of these ran at least two hours. And that's not to mention the emails and the other correspondences. So we really do appreciate their volunteerism for this process. At this time, I'd like to begin a presentation of the two boundary plan proposals. If technology is working, and we do have a lot of new technology in the boardroom, I will pull up a map that will have the two boundary plans being considered, Plans Four and Plan Six, and we'll walk through them and look at the various reassignments together. The Internet gods are behaving today, so we can proceed with our presentation. First of all, we're focusing on this area, Quantico Center. It is being proposed for reassignment in both Plans Four and Plan Six from Dumfries to Patty. Just to be thorough, the thin purple line is the existing elementary boundary. The shading then represents the proposed plan. The section on the left is for Plan Four. The right half of the screen is for Plan Six. So in this situation, there's no difference between the two plans. Most of the plans are identical to each other, but I will bring special attention to the two key areas that are different. The community of Triple E Heights and Possum Point are reassigned from Dumfries to Swan's Moving on to Swan's Creek, the homes off of Quantico Creek are reassigned from Swan's Creek to Potomac Shores, as are the homes off of Cherry Hill Road, Potomac Shores Community, and the Shore Haven Moving on to River Oaks, the community of Orchard Landing is being proposed for reassignment from River Oaks to Potomac Shores. We'll move on to Williams. In Williams, the communities of Kelly's Ridge, Center Condos, Princeton Woods, and the Virginia Commons Apartments and Single Family Detached Homes are proposed for reassignment from Williams to Potomac Shores, as is the community of Spyglass Hill. The community of Cardinal Forest, Bow Ridge Estates, and Cardinal Glen are proposed for In Plans Four and Six, the residences north of North Gate Drive accessed via Cranberry Court or Edgewood Drive are proposed for reassignment from Henderson to Patty. The committee wanted to point out that this particular section, this improves the geographic progression from elementary to middle school, as this is the shared Graham Park Middle Moving on to Henderson, the communities of Cardinal Point and High Bridge are proposed The residences accessed by Evergreen, Echo, Embrdale, Elmwood, and Empire are proposed for reassignment from Neapsco to Wilson in Plan Four. And then here is one of the key differences in Plan Six. The residences along Embrdale Drive are reassigned from Neapsco to Montclair. The committee also wished to mention that the purpose of this reassignment is to divide the total number of reassignments from Neapsco among both Wilson and Montclair to balance a student enrollment. Moving on to Bel Air. Plans Four and Six, the residences accessed by Cloverdale, Foxglove Court, and Felmore Court are proposed for reassignment from Bel Air to Neapsco, as In Plans Four and Six, the houses accessed by Cherry Dale Drive and Catalpa Court are proposed for reassignment from Fitzgerald to Neapsco. Moving on to Marumsco Hills, the communities of Neapsco Commons propose for reassignment from Marumsco Hills to Fitzgerald Elementary. The communities of Potomac Club, Chesterfield Apartments, and Stone Bridge are proposed for reassignment from Marumsco Hills to Fitzgerald Elementary. Moving to Vaughn Elementary, the communities of Summer House Condos and Summer Land are proposed for reassignment from Vaughn Elementary to Kilby. In Plans Four and Six, the Belmont Mobile Home Park is proposed for reassignment from At this time, we'll move to Featherstone Elementary. The community of Misty Ridge is proposed for reassignment from Featherstone to Fitzgerald, as is the community of Elon Potomac Heights. The communities of Bayside Park, Featherstone Farms, Featherstone Shores, and Potomac View are proposed for reassignment from Featherstone Elementary to Potomac View Elementary. Linwood, I'm sorry, moving on to Potomac View Elementary, Linwood and Village Square are both proposed for reassignment from Potomac View to Marumsco Hills. The community of Woodbridge Station is proposed for reassignment to Kilby. This particular reassignment unites a previously split community. Lastly, in Aqqaquan Elementary's attendance area, the communities of Greenwich Hill and Woodbridge Commons are proposed for reassignment from Aqqaquan Elementary to Belmont. At this time, the associated figures for Plan Four are presented to you for your review. Recall that Regulation 264-2 charges that each boundary plan attempt to balance the enrollment within plus or minus 15% of the total utilization for the subsequent three years after the boundary adjustment goes into effect. I will briefly discuss some of the features associated with Plan Four at this time. The new Potomac Shores Elementary School is projected to open with 81% of its program capacity being utilized. Over the course of the three years, we anticipate this to increase to 109% approximately. The replacement campus for Kilby Elementary is projected to open at 108% of capacity and three years later anticipated to decrease slightly to 107.3%. The existing and additional 187 seats at Belmont Elementary are going to be utilized at a rate of 110% when it is complete next year, and that decreases marginally to 104% over the course of the following three years. The existing and additional 253 seats at Henderson Elementary School are going to be utilized at a rate of roughly 89% in 2017, and we anticipate an increase to approximately 95% in 2019. Lastly, the existing and additional 149 seats at Neapsco Elementary are anticipated to be utilized at a rate of 101.8% in 2017 and decrease to approximately 98% in 2019. On behalf of the committee, they wanted to express to you explicitly that there were numerous overcrowding relief being offered to various schools in varying degrees. Williams Elementary next year was originally projected for its current boundaries to be at 152.1%. In both plans, it is reduced to 110.5%. In 2017, Swan's Creek Elementary was originally projected to be at 124% of capacity, and in Plan Four, it is reduced to 92.1%. Marumsco Hills Elementary was projected to be at 138.9% next year, and in Plan Four, it is reduced to 108.6%. And I just want to mention that this is not easy. The committee worked very hard and took their roles very seriously, and I think that this is a worthwhile configuration. In respect to the demographic composition per Plan Four, each demographic variable does not change more than 12.1% from the values currently associated with the current We'll move on to Plan Six. We won't do the comparative tool again. We walked through that already. In front of you now are the figures associated with Plan Six. The differences in the figures are going to be displayed visually for you on the next slide. It's a little bit easier to identify the changes. I'll point out that the red horizontal bar is at 104.5% of total utilization in 2019. You can think of this as to mean You can think of this as to mean if we were able to perfectly balance each school, every school would be at 104.5%. You'll see that many of the schools are fairly close to that. Moving to specifically the differences between the two plans, we're going to discuss those differences and how those affect the figures. We will begin with the proposed differences in the Southbridge area. The key revision from Plan Four that's present in Plan Six is the committee's efforts to reduce the splitting of the Wayside Community and Southbridge. This was preferred vocally by someone in attendance at the second community meeting. End result, the utilization rate of Swan's Creek Elementary is increased by 8.2% to 100% in 2017, as fewer projected students are assigned to the Potomac Shores Elementary School. In 2019, three years later, this modification provides for additional space to be present at the Potomac Shores Elementary School as that community is continuing to build out. The other key difference is in the Montclair area. By reassigning the Embradale Drive from Niapco Elementary to Montclair Elementary in Plan Six rather than to Wilson, as it is in Plan Four, there is an increase of 5.2% in capacity utilization. You can also see a corresponding decrease on this slide for Wilson Elementary. The committee's chief motivations behind this revision from Plan Four came as a result of the input offered by a former Boundary Committee member who attended the first and second community meetings. The individual voiced to the committee that there was a provision provided to students when the boundaries for Wilson Elementary were set that allowed families that were connected to the military to remain at their currently assigned school. The individual fears that as time progresses and these children progress through the school and potentially new families move in and replace them, that the new families would not be offered the same provision to transfer out of Wilson's attendance area. Therefore, our figures could potentially underestimate how many students are assigned and attending Wilson Elementary. By splitting the total number of students being reassigned from Niapco between Wilson and Montclair, the load is divided between two schools rather than sent entirely to In closing, the Eastern Elementary Boundary Planning Committee respectfully requests that you receive its report and consider approving one of the presented plans. Both Plans Four and Six received considerable support from the committee members to be included in your consideration in the final report. When asked which of the two plans they most preferred, 11 committee members most preferred Plan Six. Two members in attendance abstained from the votes regarding their preference. Lastly, the committee also requests that you grant rising fifth graders a provision to remain at their currently assigned school with the caveat that they provide their own transportation, or at least that their parents provide the transportation. Thank you very much. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Who wants to go? You don't have to. Anyone? Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Thank you. I just want to first start by thanking the Boundary Committee and our Planning Division for putting together these recommendations for us. This is my first time around on the board with being so involved in this process being that is directly impacting my area. And I have so many questions that I've actually asked for a meeting because I'm still pondering over the first one, which is, I do very much understand that it is a lot of work to put these plans together and to try to get laypeople to understand all of the terms and planning and geography and everything that goes into this. And my original question, I still feel is a little bit unanswered, which came up when I went to the very first public meeting and got the first glimpse at all of this, and that is, when we know that we have such a huge overcrowding problem on the Route One Corridor, and we have, even with the additional seats coming in, and such as Kilby and the talk of Cherry Hill, I'm still a little, no, I'm still a lot confused as to how these boundaries got so spread out and overlapped so many different magisterial districts and still are not providing the amount of relief that we're really looking for along the Route One Corridor. And I'm having a lot of constituents call me, and at this point, I'm just having people I know, I don't even know what district they're in, calling me, asking me. Very simply, with a new school being built in the Potomac Shores area, how come we are stretching so far out to the west with Chris Young and with Montclair Elementary School and so far up to the north with Aquaquan and Belmont and not touching schools like Leesylvania and some of the other schools that are closer to start with? I mean, that's the main question I get asked the most often, and I think it would really help the public understand these plans as presented if we could give them a little background on that. And then to follow up on that question, if we could also, I love the Internet view. It's fantastic. Technology is great.
And it worked tonight.
It is. It did. It does make understanding these plans a little bit easier, but for myself, who does not have a geography brain, I would like to request maybe if we could get a full map of the Boundaries Four and Six, or whatever, moving forward, with the neighborhoods already on them, so that any random person, maybe if you don't have Internet access, could simply pull up the two maps and identify complete neighborhood pictures instead of maybe putting in a street or a particular area, not really understanding how it impacts somewhere else, because that's important when parents try to plan out not only where they live, where their children go to school, maybe where their daycare is. All of those things matter, and it's not just in the world that we live in, neighborhood specific.
Sure.
So I think that that would be very helpful.
Yeah. I anticipate that we could print poster-sized maps and send those out to the affected schools. If they don't have Internet access, then if they could go to their school, they could view.
Sorry, they don't have to be printed.
Okay.
Just posted.
Website's fine.
You know, if someone requests a printed version, but
Sure.
That's something that we just don't have
Sure.
On a large scale.
Sure.
When you do the Internet view, I understand that it is there, but as I'd asked at the public meeting for the old-fashioned, I was ready for the view. I don't even know what you call it, it was a projector, transparency sheet?
Sure.
I was gonna pull out a black marker and write over top of it. So I'm sure there's still some people out there like me, and every opinion helps, I think, or should be considered, so.
And to backtrack to the first question, and it's a very valid question, and perhaps those who aren't as intimately involved in the process as the staff and the committee, it can seem rather stretching and reaching. So just to kind of give a little narrative of how this process evolved, and it definitely always morphs and evolves. So the first point, why was Leesylvania not affected, although it was fairly proximate to all the other schools that are being affected? In the CIP, a four-room addition is going to be constructed at Leesylvania in 2019. Its stable growth with, and coupled with the addition, it's going to be resolved by its own addition. It's not going to have additional space added to be able to help other nearby schools with their overcrowding problems, but it's going to be self-sufficient with its own addition. So for that reason, we did not include it in the mix. The preliminary plan was the only plan that was drafted by staff. That was the starting point for the committee. Plan Two was developed with the committee's input, and the committee realized that there wasn't a whole lot that they could do to accommodate and to address the overcrowding to the extent that they wanted to based on the players in the game. So Plan Three was the first plan that incorporated Wilson Elementary. We anticipate Wilson to be at approximately 68% of capacity next year if no boundary adjustments are created. So after consulting with staff, the administration at Wilson, and reaching out and offering a person to be on the Boundary Planning Committee to represent the school, we then felt it was appropriate to include Wilson. And by including Wilson, it actually added 191 seats to this project that could actually help with overcrowding along the Route One and 95 corridor. In order for that to work, there has to be a cascading effect. So if you have space at the corner of Minnieville and Sprigs, and you reach eastward into Niapco, then you have space in Niapco. And then there's this domino effect that continues to move eastward towards 95, and you're able to provide additional relief to Fitzgerald and to Williams and to Marumsco Hills and then up to Vaughn. It's this domino effect, but it only works if you allow for Wilson to be included into the scope. When Wilson was included, the committee thought, well, we also have another school that is proximate that is also fairly underutilized, and that being Montclair Elementary. We repeated the same process. We reached out to administration at Montclair, we spoke with the committee, and developed a plan that also brought Montclair into the scope of potentially affected schools to leverage the available space there. Essentially, what you have is an unevenly spatially distributed overcrowding issue. And the schools and sites that can accommodate additions are not always exactly where the overcrowding concerns, but through boundary adjustments, you can reassign neighborhoods and effectively reach into areas that there is overcrowding. And that's essentially what has happened from the beginning of the preliminary plan to where we are today with Plans Four and Six being presented.
Ms. Williams, you still have the floor.
Thank you. And as I said before, there are a lot of questions. I don't want to take up everybody's time. I am concerned, just at a preliminary view of this plan with the socioeconomic distribution, it seems off a little bit.
Okay.
Kind of, would be the nice way to put it. Especially over in the Montclair Featherstone, these areas over in here, like Fannie Fitzgerald is, our public speaker so nicely brought to our attention, which was loudly brought to my attention repeatedly over the past couple of days. For students who could walk to that school and no longer being able to walk there, and then students even closer to where I live on Featherstone, further distance, the same thing going from the Aquaquan students and the Belmont students. Greenwich is, I mean, you bend that corner and go onto the bridge, and you're at Aquaquan Elementary, and now they're going to be bused further down and through more traffic. I mean, I don't know if you've seen Route One early in the morning. I get the pleasure of driving it twice a day. It's just so much fun. And we're still building in that area. So my concern is, I'm not quite sure how those type of moves are beneficially, or to our students are financially sound for our school division. And I know that these are not final plans, and that this is, we're still in the beginning process of all of this. But I would very much like for those two things to be really reevaluated for the benefit of our students and for our own budget, because I'm still struggling with how that makes sense. It seems like we would have to add more buses, and we would be putting students through more traffic and more time away from home and things like that. So, and I understand from a planning perspective, there's always a reason. So I'm not saying, I know it just didn't magically appear out of thin air, but I think that it does lead to this belief in the county, especially for those of us who've lived here for a long period of time, myself included, it does rub you the wrong way and kind of gives you that feeling that maybe here we go again, there's a new school being built, and all the new houses, and all of the new people that are moving in get the chance to go to the new school, and the residents who've lived here forever don't. And I've been saying that since I got on the board. I've lived it. I would really, really appreciate it if especially now that it's literally on my doorstep, that I don't have to explain it to my child, my child's friends, or anybody else that they go to school with, why, once again, we're under the same perception. Because before, like when I was growing up, we didn't have the Internet, so maybe I didn't know. Like, for me, it was when Hilton opened, and my friends moved and their parents moved, and they went to Hilton and the planetarium, and, you know, I went to Woodbridge. So at that time, we were kind of perception-wise, now, the elite schools, high school, right? You didn't want to go to Garfield. That was the rumors back then, right? Hey, nothing against Garfield, I was here with the band. I admitted as a Woodbridge alumni, I was in love with Garfield that night. Doesn't happen often from a Woodbridge alumni. But anyway, my point is that I would just really think that moving forward as this board, I know we've made a commitment to changing those perceptions and really embracing the county as a whole and all of our citizens and new people and residents that have been here for generations, and I feel that that would be a step in the right direction if we go back and really reevaluate those choices and those perceptions. I think it will make a difference. I know it'll make a difference to the students, for sure, and as a parent, I can tell you, not only as a board member, but as a parent, it's a conversation I just would like to not to continue to have, because I have a three-year-old that hasn't started yet, and 15, we're still having these conversations. So if we could go back and look at that, I'd really appreciate it.
And I understand that there may be a perception that, shared by some, and they're likely frustrated, when you work with boundary adjustments, you're affecting directly the education of students and where they receive the education. What the committee felt, and I think that the staff would echo this sentiment, is that what seemed like true inequity was looking at the schools along Route One that had 12 trailers and 65, 70% of economically disadvantaged students attending those schools. And then if you looked elsewhere, you would find schools with no trailers that had a much lower economically disadvantaged population. So that was a concern that the committee had, and it was with that spirit that they crafted Plans Four and Six and leveraged a brand-new school as of this year to help overcrowding in areas where there is a higher concentration of low-income students. The only way that that is obtainable is to reach along the Cardinal Drive Corridor and let those communities, regardless of how new the homes are that are being constructed, shift westward. That's what the committee was doing. And they certainly were focusing on the demographic composition of the schools and seeking to embrace the diversity, all while trying to help students receive their education in a permanent classroom rather than one that can be pulled away by a truck.
Thank you. I still think we could do better, but thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Wilk, and then Ms. Rolston.
Yeah, hi. A couple of things about that. First, going with that point, I do want to commend you on Map Six with what would be the perception of a brand-new Potomac Shores, the way you've configured it and stretched it into some of the areas of lower-to-middle-class families and include them in what would be the perception of an exclusively wealthy community. I commend you. I think that's great, and it also fulfills what my community, I do live in Southbridge, how we want to stay compact, and we'll stay in Swan's Creek, which I think is a great school, although people would be like, well, wouldn't you draw yourself in Potomac Shores? No, I'm happy with Swan's Creek. It's a good school. But I like the compactness and keeping Southbridge together, and I like Plan Six. However, you know, I will probably be offering an amendment in two weeks with another area, and that goes with my questions.
Sure.
Number one, first, how many exact students? Because the current numbers and configurations with the two plans go and take all the changes in Henderson into effect, so it's hard for me to kind of pinpoint. How many, do we know exactly how many students by cutting out the Northgate community that we're relieving Henderson of specifically?
Northgate in 2019 would be 47 elementary students.
Okay, 47, okay.
This particular community was formerly assigned to Patty in 2008.
But then they went back to
Correct.
Well, that's gonna be another issue. Okay. Okay, oh, okay. Going along with that, so I appreciate that, 47, okay, great. Looking at that community, and I know in both plans, it says one of the big rationale is for better alignment with Graham Park. So one of my first questions is, with the amount of development that will continue happening in the Potomac District, and I was just over break, meeting with Supervisor Catigan and touring Potomac Shores, which was a great thing, I was informed that there are probably some other developments coming in the Route 1 corridor that she doesn't even know if your office is aware of. We're talking, you know, homes that are probably coming across the street from First Mount Zion and the senior community, but not seniors, but different developments coming that way, and a few others that we'll connect with and talk about there. But my point is, looking at a progression, and saying that we're trying to do this for better progression for these kids to be able to go from Patty to Graham Park, wouldn't the argument also be as, development continues, it's going to continue to shift this, and there will never really be perfect progression from communities to middle, then to high school? I'll let you, go ahead.
I think that's a fair and reasonable use of logic. I don't know that that justifies...
Wish my LSAT scores were the same thing.
I don't know that that justifies not attempting to improve a progression now, because there are students right now who would benefit from such a modification. But you're absolutely correct, there is a lot of development occurring along Route 1 and 95, and we'd be glad to sit down with you or email you and tell you how we do track it.
Were there specific parent complaints about this from that community of 47 kids, saying that we want to be drawn into this because we want our kids to progress into Graham Park?
No, there was not specific request for this reassignment. There were requests at community meetings to do better, to balance the enrollment better. There was and is available space at Patty. The committee saw that as an opportunity to reassign a community that was formerly assigned to Patty and leverage its available space.
Okay, couple other questions. Okay, so we've been talking about the, what we're looking at here with some of the stuff that's happening in the Cardinal Point area, Cardinal Ridge and all that stuff. Part of that community, in effect, lives in what would be the Neapsco Magisterial District, while the Northgate community lives within the Potomac District. Is there any consideration ever, we're talking about compactness, about keeping families within the boundaries of schools within those districts themselves?
The regulation does not task the proposals to consider the magisterial assignments. I guess the representation question could be answered, that there is a chairman-at-large that would represent all constituents.
Okay. Okay, a couple more questions, I appreciate it. For the 40, as you said, projected 47 students being moved from Northgate to Henderson, was there any discussion or consideration talked about the military status of these families? I mean, we're talking, again, about 20 families-ish, if we do the math, with 47 averaging, you know, one to two, two, three kids each. Because my question, you know, and I think I've broadcasted this, I've gone door-to-door because this is a tiny, compact, this is manageable, and I don't just knock on doors during election season. I did talk with a lot of these community members, even on Monday of this past week, and the vast majority, and I've talked to all but five probably of these families, again, that's an estimate, but I would say about 75% of them are families military, where you have the transition, you know, because of assignments, whether of mom or dad. Is any of that taken into consideration with such a small number being cut out of the Northgate community?
Again, formerly, it is not considered. It's not in the regulation, but we thought that perhaps this question might come up, so we took it upon ourselves to do the analysis. And in Plan Six, there would be 85 students who are connected to military families, proposed for reassignment. 32 of these reside within Marumsco Hills, and 18, the second-largest, reside within Henderson. So your polling seems reasonable.
Yes, logic is going crazy right now. Okay, and again, I just want to commend and compliment, I like the Plan Six, obviously with some tweaks that Ms. Williams was alluding to herself, and I'm sure some of these other board members are going to talk about some of their areas too. So thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Ralston, then Ms. Jesse.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm starting to feel that we just picket poor Neapsco so much along the top end. Every time I turn around, we're moving a little bit more across the street, a little more to the left. Some of my kids, all they do is just get on a bus and where it stops. And the parents aren't at all happy with this. I'm hearing from parents that said this will be the third move that they've had around Neapsco Elementary and Fitzgerald. At what point in time do you see kind of coming to a slowdown?
I think there are a variety of factors that are beyond the control of the school division to know that a slowdown is occurring that's economically based. It depends how long Washington DC metro area is popular and acts as a pull factor to the greater nation. But this is an area of concern, and for that reason, in our regulation, each boundary plan attempts to not reassign the same neighborhood at the same level over several years. It's not always possible. I won't hide behind the regulation and say that it never happens, but sometimes more students show up than we anticipated. A shift in economics, familial status, a host of reasons that are really beyond the scope of our project right now, but yes, we hope that there's some more stability, some more permanency in the boundaries soon. But we know that there's going to be at least some adjustments in 2021 at the elementary level, when the Cherry Hill School opens, and even sooner than that, in 2019, when we have additions at Lake Ridge, Antietam, Spring Woods, and none at Leesylvania.
In your forecasting, when you take a look at the fact that we're getting ready to build a new school, and you think to yourself, you know, okay, I'm going to get kids from here and here. What happened to Wilson with the military? They decided that they did not want to move their students after all, correct?
That's correct. Wilson had a 12% transfer out this year.
With this being a military area, how much is that factored in to the number of students that we have, just looking at elementary alone? Has that been factored in? I remember going to four, personally.
So the transfer ratios at each elementary school are factored into the projections. They are not specifically tuned to the reason for the transfer. That's beyond the scope of our model, but just the overall transfer rate, that ratio is incorporated in our model.
So your projection of how many students, and we still haven't filled Wilson, and we have another school coming online soon, so the movement shifts in order to cover those areas is what's causing all of this movement?
I'm not sure that I'm quite following your question. Could you rephrase that?
The movement of students from place to place.
Sure.
When I get a call and a parent says I live across the street from a school, but now I've got to go five blocks away, who are we, who are you talking to to find out if that's a good idea? To move them from a school that's across the street from them to a school that's four or five blocks away, in order to accommodate students that you're moving probably to that school?
In this division, we have a student transfer process that has been approved by the school board and is carried out by administration. There are specialty programs that are not offered at every single school, so for that reason, there is a transfer process in place. When possible, we try to provide for an efficient transport of students, but however, there are times that when an assigned neighborhood does live across the street from the school, and they are bused there even though they're within the one-mile walker boundary, because it's deemed unsafe for elementary students to travel by foot to that school. Ultimately, the scope of the project was to utilize the over 3,500 additional seats that are being constructed, to try to reduce the number of students who are in portable classrooms. The parameters within the regulation are often at odds with each other. There's no way to optimize on each of the parameters. We can optimize by sending students to their closest school, but we will have schools that are at 150% of capacity, and we'll have schools that are at 40% of capacity. So in that spirit, we always have a representative from Transportation attending all of the committee meetings, each of the community meetings, and they are voicing how students can be more efficiently transported to the schools in a safe and efficient manner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Jesse.
This is a lot of work, because it's just, it's just overwhelming to me that people are moving and going back. It's just crazy to me. I mean, and first of all, I know how much work you guys put into this, and you know, you know, you can, since I've been here, I've been, had nothing, nothing but praise. But I've seen a pattern here. The bottom line, you need more schools.
Yes, yes. Yes.
I mean, you, you need more schools. And so, I, you know, for people who say, well, Lilly's talking about these Western schools, yes, I am, because you've got 23 schools over there under capacity. And when I look at this, at the end, either Plan, and maybe I'm incorrect, by 2023, in Plan Four, 11 schools will be back at overcapacity. In Plan Six, 14 schools will be at overcapacity. Potomac Shores, if I'm correct, in Plan Six will have 206% capacity, 84% minority. Potomac Shores in Plan Four has 212% capacity, 81% minority. Lake Ridge, we have, we're adding on, so those schools are going to have to do boundaries, and all those kids are going to be moved around. And those principals are going to go from 600 or 700 kids to 900, and you're going to have lunch all day, which is what happens when you have these schools with all of these kids. These kids are having, they're having lunch, because I talked to some people, from 10:00 in the morning, elementary, until 2:00 in the afternoon. I would love to see us reach a point where we're at least at 90% capacity in our schools, but I'm looking at, for example, Fitzgerald. Just one of the citizens said, why does my child have to go from Fitzgerald all the way to Neapsco, and then somebody else is coming from over here to, back to Fitzgerald, and then Fitzgerald is going to end up at 136% capacity at the end of the day? The bottom line is, when I wrote the position paper, and I'm not big about writing, haven't written a thing since I've been here, but there's a pattern here where the board supervisors, as far as I'm concerned, should spend their money and give us the land to build new schools. We need schools. All these kids getting on buses, going back and forth, leaving the backyard, getting on a bus, going down the street, cross, trip to Neapsco from Fitzgerald is not that big of a situation, but there's something where Fitzgerald is going somewhere else that's, it's like probably a 10-minute drive for elementary kids. And it's not really about the bathrooms. Everybody said, well, she's talking about the bathrooms. I think it's, we do a disservice to kids, especially these kids in these low-income areas, where we are so overcapacity that they are going to an outside bathroom, whether you fix it next year or whatever. This just should not have happened. And so, for me, it's because, and I'm told that in Dumfries, in Potomac, there's going to be some more building. We're presupposing this is going to happen without the board of supervisors, again, rezoning, and we don't have land. So in my position paper, I talked about the need to stop some of the rezoning, to put a moratorium of sorts, and I know that's challenging, to give us some money, but don't put strings on it. Don't tell me, when I've got all these kids here at 100 capacity, 200 capacity, that you want me to give you 500 seats on the West, when there are 500 seats at Brentsville right now, there's seats, there's capacity, undercapacity at some of the other high schools. You've got 500 seats over there. But if they're overcapacity a little bit, I'm just saying, make it a priority. It hurts my heart, that it's so simple to me. We need more schools. They need to make it a priority to get these elementary kids out of all of these trailers and build more schools. And stop telling me that I'm playing politics, because I don't want elementary kids going outside or coming in for a tornado drill and not having the right structure to participate in the tornado drill. Aqqaan, 100, it looks like Aqqaan by the end of the day is still going to be at 135% capacity. Now, the tribe, the parent that came up and talked about the tribes, about Aqqaan, it's not just that this school has done something that most schools have not been able to do. This school is a nationally recognized school. It is a model school for Prince William County with low-income kids, transient kids, English speakers. We are, they're going to California for national recognition. Yet, we want to pick up those kids and move them across Route 1 when their parents are just saying, just let my child walk to school. Let my child stay at a high-performing school. In Title I land, there's this choice, where if you're a Title I student, and you can go to another school, and it may be now with this new waiver, what's going on, that may not be true, but there's not one person on this panel, I can tell you right now, who has children or grandchildren whose schools were at 94% capacity percentage pass rate in math, 89% pass rate in reading, pretty much 90% across the board, with 80, 60, and 70% low-income students and English-speaking. They have done something that nobody has done, and we're thinking about penalizing them because we don't have space.
(applause).
So, yes, I'm, I'm not going to ask, you know, I used to do this thing at Vaughan, where I had, you could either keep, tweak, delete, or seek new practices. So Justin is going to ask for a tweak. He said, a tweak. Mine isn't, it's not going to be, it's not going, mine is not going to be a tweak, it's going to be a delete.
Woo!
We have got to ask for parents who are not in this boardroom. We have to speak up and say, look, all of these people, I couldn't keep up with it, moving from here, then they're moving back to Fitzgerald. Fitzgerald, this person moves over here, then they move back. Aqqaan is going to go from 150-something, but they don't, it's a percentage, remember, they have a smaller number of students. Aqqaan is going to only move back, is going to move back to 135% capacity at the end. Belmont is going to be at 121. Dumfries is going to be at 100. Why can't we tell the board of supervisors that we demand that all of our schools at least be at 90 or 95 capacity? I think our kids deserve that, and let them say no to that. But don't tell me you want to give me $10 million, but only if I give you something else. Just tell me that you're going to do your job. Just tell me that you're gonna do your job. And to David, I'm sorry, Mr. Klein, and to your staff, I know you've done a wonderful job, but when I look at all the undercapacity numbers, twenty-three schools, somewhere we've missed, we've underprojected, and we can't, our numbers are not quite where we want them to be, but we cannot continue to ask these kids to get on buses when what we need is a school and we need it immediately. And I think we need to look at different structures. We need to look at smaller pieces of land and look, think outside of the box, and go vertical, and look at retail spaces, and look at different options. I think-
Ms. Jesse, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do need to keep the conversation focused on boundaries, and I gave you a little bit of a wide berth there, but I was hoping you'd come back around, but we need to keep it focused on boundaries.
I, I had no plans. I had no plans of coming back around, but I will just say to you, none. None.
Please.
Okay, but I'm sorry, but you did the best you could with what you had.
Correct.
But I think we just need to do better. I'm very sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wasn't sure if I was gonna go. I guess I'm, I'm still trying to figure out whether overcrowding's an issue we're supposed to address on this map, or if we just leave kids in schools we're happy with. But I've got a couple of, actually, I'll say something a bit more comprehensive. Sorry. So, last year, we had a boundary process. It was sort of addressing, shall we say, eastern-central elementary schools, for lack of a better phrase. Now, we're doing the, essentially, Route-One corridor. We've got, the hole on the right side is where we're putting in another school, I think the Cherry Hill site we're calling it. We've got another school coming on, and then we've got, I think, three additions coming on to Aquaquan schools, I think three different Aquaquan elementary schools coming on. It seems to me that over the course of potentially four different boundary processes, we're setting ourselves up to shift kids a lot as we keep re-boundaring every time we do another one of these. And really, redisturbing, whether we shift schools, we're gonna redisturb schools that maybe we're trying to get settled for a year. And it would, it would seem that the better part of prudence would say, "Let's comprehensively boundary this whole area that we know we're building up over a four-year period and phase in those boundaries so there isn't the instability for a lot of the families right there." There's some consistency. I, I think we would, and then we could probably even better balance some of the overcrowding That would seem a lot more prudent. Oh, and we've got, I guess, the, potentially, a Parkway site, we've got another elementary school along with those three additions. So, we're doing a lot right there, but we're gonna keep shifting kids and keep rearranging schools regularly if we do this boundary in a very piecemeal fashion. And I, I think we, as a board, may want to, if we, if we approve something in two weeks, maybe require a phasing in for the rest of it. I'm not, it just, it seems like we're really setting ourselves up to keep shifting. And, right, but we, we can do, we could do the whole boundary all at once and then phase it all in so there's not quite, quite the inconsistency. I've got a couple of, so the last boundary process I was very involved in, I showed a bunch of the meetings, I talked to a lot of people in the community because it, I don't know, maybe sixty percent roughly-ish affected schools in my district. I saw where things were going in, I guess, the end of the summer and what the original maps were. I was like, "Well, I guess now it's, you know, the people on eastern side are gonna have fun." And so, I was kind of, you know, I figured I'd sit back and kind of wait, wait till we got to here to, to worry about what was going on. And then I got a call about Wilson getting, getting included. Actually, I'll pause there for a second. The one interesting thing about this map is the way it's cropped. There's only a fraction of the Wilson boundaries included. And if we look at kids going to schools locally, compactness for, you know, community interest, et cetera, the Wilson boundaries currently are probably about a three-prong tiger with a bunch of fingers sticking off. It's about one of the least compact boundaries of all the elementary schools in the entire So, I'll, I'll start that there. So, I, I got the call about including Wilson, and I was, you know, I'm always open to see new ideas. And so, I told staff at the time, was the PTO head there, Beth Williams is a very smart, capable person. If you can get her to buy on, then it makes sense and I'll go along with it. But also, I wanted to see, you know, kinda see what the maps looked like besides just, you know, hearing about different road names, different spots. What we have here just kinda keeps the fingers protruding in different directions. So, so there's that. But then also, I was looking at the map we passed last year for Wilson and the, the projection data. And along with pulling in Wilson, we also pulled in Montclair. So, I was looking at the, the projection numbers for both Wilson, Montclair, between these two maps. And the, the projections are actually pretty steady for Montclair in terms of number of projected students that we were expecting for Montclair. They deviated from last year this year by four to twenty students over a number of years. That's pretty darn close. Somehow, the projection numbers we had from last year for Wilson, for the exact same boundary area, dropped by about one-hundred-and-fifty students. So, this, this capacity issue that's created, supposedly created in Wilson is because suddenly we redo the calculations and there's one-hundred-and-fifty students expected to show up. This isn't about the planning capacity use. That, you know, we understand how that changes and that makes sense. To be that, that significantly off is very concerning, and talking to people who go to the school, they don't really buy those numbers, and looking at the other communities coming on board. The other thing that was very concerning is when I told staff, I was like, "Look, if Beth signs off, I'm good with it. She's a very smart, capable person." Originally, the map that was there for Wilson had a program capacity number, it was right after we redid the program capacity number, of about eleven-hundred students. That should jump off the map to anybody for an elementary school, because that's really high. Beth asked right off the board, "This number looks off, it should be lower." And it was repeatedly told, "No, you're wrong, this number's right." I followed up and asked staff about it, and immediately, they had a number that was about two-hundred seats lower. So, there seemed to be significant number issues in terms of why and how we're looping Wilson in. Also, just going back to what I said before about just the consistency for schools and the, the families and neighborhoods. We've had two years in a row where Wilson was a significant topic for this board, shall we say. And I've been getting calls and emails from people going, "Can't we just be left alone?" You know? They're like, "I thought we weren't gonna have to worry about boundaries or my school." They're like, "We're happy we got a school, we have boundaries we can live with, can we just be left alone?"
No.
And so, to, to add things in on, on questionable numbers seems interesting, but then I look, I look at this section of Neapsco that people are proposing moving to Wilson. This section in Neapsco is closer to Neapsco, closer to Bel Air, closer to Henderson, it's closer to Montclair, it's closer to Minneville, and it's closer to Enterprise. We're, we're driving these students past a lot of good-quality schools to send them down the road. Now, I actually lived in this neighborhood for two and a half years. These are hard-working, salt-of-the-earth kind of people. And we talk about the importance of parents being able to be involved in their kids' educations and going to the, you know, being involved in the schools that their students are going to, and these are, these are folks who, who want the best for their kids, are working hard to make that happen, but having them drive a further distance is going to be more challenging for them than maybe for other people. And having them in a school that's close by makes a lot of sense. Driving them past five schools to send them to another elementary school seems really fishy. So, I, I have a lot of concerns with that.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Anyone else? Dr. Walts.
Yeah, I, I don't really have a detailed response, but when we started talking about this back in the fall, one of the things that was noted, we talked about the military exemption, which, again, whatever the board determines to do, we're going to certainly do it. But that was something that was introduced that night for the first time. And when you take the other transfers out of Wilson, you've got almost a hundred people that elected to transfer out for a variety of reasons: childcare, military family, the fifth-grade exemption, IB or other specialty program, employment, and other extenuating circumstances. So, there was almost ten percent of the people assigned to Kyle Wilson that opted not to go there. So, I, I just think that's a point that we need to make sure we, we're looking at those facts because those people all followed the rules that the board has established.
Can I, can I?
Yes. Mr. Deutsch, sure.
Sure, granted. But the numbers that we had on the first map were made before those exemptions. Now, the exemptions may have allowed a number of people to stay out, but over two years, those kids are gonna start filtering back in. As the great exemptions, you know, disappear, military exemptions, people move out, their kids either graduate from elementary school, those are going to disappear. Those numbers should kick back up and kind of even themselves out in about two, three years, roughly. It's much like how we, you know, have a exemption for, or don't have a senior class largely for high schools, and those numbers tick up as, as those kick in. So, we should have those kick up and those don't tick up over the next three years on this map. So, I don't think that that fully answers that question at all.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Anyone else? Okay, I'll just finish up by saying that obviously, as a chairman represents the entire county, it's, it's obviously tough to know every neighborhood and every detail and everything else, and I, and I did go to the one community meeting at Freedom High School and certainly got some input there, but I do rely heavily on the Magisterial members who know their, their districts way more than I ever possibly could. And so, I look forward, I know there's a lot, a lot of concerns and questions, not only from, from, from neighborhoods and families, but also from, from board members as well. So, I do encourage the board members, all of you, but especially the ones obviously affected, who's, who's, you know, constituents are affected by these boundaries and whose students are affected by these boundaries, to obviously work together and see what you think you can come up with, and I am certainly all ears because you know your districts way, way better than I ever possibly could. So, thank you. We are moving on to item fifteen-point-zero-one, naming of new facility services building. This is on for action. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jesse.
I move that the Prince William School Board approve the recommendation to name the new facility services building, number fifty-two, for Randy G. Dasher.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I'd like to second.
Thank you. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Deutsch, motion passed.
Moving on to superintendent's time. Dr. Walts.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyers and members of the board. First, I, again, I want to echo Chairman Sawyers in our thoughts regarding the Colgan family and the loss of Charles J. Colgan, Sr. As a tireless champion for our county, our community, and our schools, we were all richer in his service and his commitment. We were privileged to have been able to honor him in person with a lasting tribute of the high school that bears his name. Senator Colgan's legacy will live on in every student who learns within its walls and who studies the countless contributions he made to Virginia and Prince William County. One of the things that I remember the most about him is he always considered himself a statesman, and he often talked to groups of people about working together in order to make great things happen for Prince William County and the Commonwealth. We will miss him. Beginning next week, we will send all parents and guardians of students in grade three through twelve a survey so they can let us know how we are doing in meeting their children's educational needs. Those who have provided email addresses will be contacted in that manner and given a computer link to complete the survey online. All others will get the survey and link by mail and will have the option of completing the paper or the online survey. Parents with children enrolled in more than one school will receive a survey for each school. The deadline is January twenty-seventh. I extend heartfelt thanks to the Washington Redskins Foundation for donating ten thousand dollars to Mary Williams Elementary School. The funds will go toward new milk coolers and physical education equipment. David Walton, Supervisor of Vehicle Services, is quoted in the October twenty-sixteen issue of School Transportation News. The article is on "New Technologies and Emissions Rules for School Buses." He really did a great job of representing our school division in an outstanding manner in the article. He plays an important role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our sixty thousand students who ride a bus to and from school each day, as does my daughter. Stonewall Middle School's boys and girls teams have advanced to the third round of the Cyber Patriot cybersecurity competition. In round two, on December tenth, the girls team finished seventeenth in the country out of over four hundred teams. Good luck to all the students in the next round this month. Registration starts tomorrow for the spring session of our online high school program, Virtual High School at PWCS. This opportunity offers flexibility, low-student-teacher ratio, and an alternative to traditional classroom instruction. Students can earn full credit in a semester-length course with highly qualified instructors. Registration ends January thirty-first. Seventh and eighth-grade students in Prince William County Public Schools, Manassas City and Manassas Park, are invited to attend an instruction to hands-on STEM activities at the Governor's School at Innovation Park on Saturday, January twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, from ten a.m. to noon in Bull Run Hall on the Manassas campus of George Mason University. Check the Division news box on middle school webpages for more information. I'm proud to announce thirty-two teachers have been nominated for Teacher of the Year Awards and eight principals have been nominated for the Principal of the Year. Congratulations to all. Please see our website for their names and schools. I'd also like to thank all principals for their outstanding leadership as we recognize them this month. Also, twelve of our educators have renewed their National Board certification, which is required every ten years. Congratulations to all these teachers and administrators. They will be honored at a school board reception on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, at Colgan High School. A final reminder for parents and guardians, the annual Parents Summit will be held on Saturday, January seventh, at Hilton High School from eight to twelve twenty, I'm sorry, eight to eleven twenty a.m. This event was called "The Best Ever" by those who participated and evaluated the experience last year. This is also a great time to shine a light on our school counselors. Many counselors helped facilitate this opportunity. Also, on January seventh, don't miss the performance of the All County High School Bands at two p.m. at Osmond Park High School. We had formally requested that the State Board of Education reassign Fred Lynn Middle School with partial accreditation based on the many accomplishments made by the staff and students at the school. Unfortunately, that request has been denied by the state school board. The school staff continues to move forward with an improvement plan that is already demonstrating success. This information is shared in part as the Vice Chairman, Jesse, has requested for transparency regarding our efforts to close the achievement gap. And speaking of Ms. Jesse, I want to congratulate you on behalf of our administrative leadership team and all of our employees for being appointed Vice Chairman of our school board for the second year. And finally- And finally, as requested by Mrs. Ralston, that we consistently share more good news. I noted in the Prince William Times, they had a picture of the Division Pool located on the campus of Colgan High School. It was the above-the-fold front page article of this week's edition, "Immersed in Learning: Aquatic Center Becomes Floating Classroom for Learning to Swim," and it's about our swimming instruction for second graders. We have three schools involved in that current article. In closing, I welcome everyone back from the holiday break and extend best wishes for a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. Moving on to item 17.01, revision of policy 542 for compensated leave. This is on for a second reading and therefore on for action. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the revision of policy 542, compensated leave.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I have a second.
Is there discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
As we have done in the past, I'll jump ahead to citizens' time here for the final, before we go to board matters. I'm going to call up, we have, I don't know, maybe roughly a dozen speakers or so, if everyone's still here. I'll call everybody up, and you can take a seat in the front, and we'll go, the same rules apply, as always, like I mentioned earlier, three minutes to speak. The light will turn, not green, the light will turn yellow at 30 seconds, reminding you to wrap it up, and it'll turn red at zero seconds, reminding you that your time is up. Please use proper decorum at all times when addressing the board, otherwise you'll be asked to step aside. Our first speakers, or our remaining speakers, excuse me, is Derek Jones, Bill Petrack, Cozy Bailey, Karen Trader Lee, and then we're on to those who signed up at the door, Dave Beavers, Chrissy Fowles, Joshua Smith, Ihab Jadwet, Anna Rodriguez, Darlene Irvin, Amanda Lau, and Siobhan Scherzer, it looks like. I apologize, the handwritten one always gets me. So our first speaker is Derek Jones. Mr. Jones.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here to request that y'all strongly consider not rezoning Akakuan Greenwich Hills Community to Belmont. I'll go with a few different reasons. The target number of 15% to try to get below that, and every one of the models does not achieve that. So it's sort of a moot point at that. I have the distinct privilege of going to both the schools. I've lived in this county for 36 to 37 years. I used to walk to Akakuan when I was in kindergarten, and then second, third, and fourth, second, third, fourth, and fifth, went to Belmont. And back then, you could walk all the way from my community of Greenwich to Belmont when I moved back to Greenwich in sixth grade. Now, I don't want my kids walking there because all of their friends live in that community because that's where everyone goes. So there's the safety issue. Lastly, my wife, who is a teacher, would be remiss if I did not bring this up, the scores. You have a Title I school that is overcapacity, that has trailers, but throughout everything has completely negated what is stacked against them and has thrived, has achieved national accreditation, has achieved amazing results there. And not to downplay or judge another school, Belmont has a science place. My wife takes their fourth-grade class to Belmont Elementary to go use their science labs. They had 30% lower pass rate for the SOLs and VGLAs at Belmont in science. I don't know what the teachers at Akakuan are doing differently, I don't know what the principals are doing differently, but they're doing something right. I don't even have a child that goes to the school yet. Next year, hopefully, I do, and then two years after that, hopefully, I do. But that's how strongly I feel that we should not take Greenwich Hills out of Akakuan, that I'm here without children there, and I need to come voice my opinion and let y'all know that if you truly do stand for the children, for the voiceless ones, and are advocates for the children, you'll need to do right by the children and let them get the best education possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Bill Petrack. Mr. Petrack?
Hi, Bill Petrack, Woodbridge. I'm here tonight to continue to speak out on the politicization of the school board. Ms. Williams, your amendment to change the rules by allowing only the chairman-at-large and the vice chair to set agendas has put a nail in the coffin of the school board. Why? Because you've silenced several of the board members and tens of thousands of their constituents. Even if you really thought that there was a way for other board members to place items on the agenda, you should have known that the uber-politicized chairman-at-large would have bent over backwards to ensure only his agenda is heard, so shame on you. And three others besides the chairman-at-large went along with it, and shame on you also for doing that. You are allowing one person to not only destroy your reputations, your personal reputations, but you're also allowing this person to significantly hurt education in our county. www recallsawyers.com. Your legacies will be that you put politics before our children. Is that what you really want? So this is a matter of, so the matter of $21.3 million. Mr. Wilks, Ms. Jessie, Ms. Williams, and Ms. Ralston, what if I came to your houses and discovered that all your furniture was torn, worn out, and in disrepair? And let's say, knowing that you couldn't afford to replace it, I pulled out my checkbook and said, "I'm going to write you each a check for $10,000 right now." My only stipulation is that you spend the money on buying new furniture. Are you going to rebuke me and say that it's your money and that you can spend it any way you want, and that if I don't like it, that you're not going to take the money? Of course not. But that's exactly what the chairman-at-large is doing, and you all are just nodding your heads in agreement. Two board members are being sued, and the chairman-at-large is suing a principal. All decorum has been lost, and who's suffering? Our children. Ms. Jessie, I read your op-ed. It wasn't very well-written, and in hindsight, I'm sure you probably would like to rewrite it. Does it really say what you feel in your heart? My point is, where is the chairman-at-large taking you? Do you think you would have written that op-ed if you were the chairman-at-large? Would you have disrespected and denied Mr. Braun the opportunity to talk about the $21.3 million at this meeting if you were the chairman-at-large? I mean, there's a lot of bad things going on. Last thing I would like to mention, because I'm running out of time, is I picked up a book that I recently started reading. It's written by a PhD in psychiatry with over 25 years' experience. On the front of the book, it says, "In one in 25 ordinary Americans secretly have no conscience and can do anything without feeling guilty." It's called "The Sociopath Next Door." I recommend each and every one of you board members read this book. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cozy Bailey. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chair Jessie, and the rest of the school board members, and Dr. Walts, Happy New Year to you. I signed up to speak tonight because I thought it was important for the board to hear from an advocate of the underserved. And make no mistake, children who are forced to walk outside their school building to go to the restroom are definitely underserved. Now, as I prepared for speaking a few words on their behalf, I began to refresh my memory on all the salient actions, the resolutions, and the prevailing laws. And then I realized that where I really needed to be speaking was during citizens' time at one of our county board of supervisors' meetings. I've concluded that actions on their part have helped create confusion and frustration, anger and angst, and complete and utter turmoil in an area that is not directly under their purview, and I may yet address them directly. But I'm here tonight, and based on data, data that I've looked at, and not on the divisive dialogue that's being carried out in the media, I find that you, the school board, have been asked to approve a school design that solves a fictitious problem overcrowding in a school that has yet to be built. And then further, further, it appears that the projections that this still-yet-to-be-built school will be overcrowded is based on occupancy data from its feeder schools. But those schools are under capacity, a fictitious problem bolstered by inadequate data. Now, in the meantime, in the meantime, there is a clear and a present problem with children having to go outside their school building to go to the restroom. And then while the 13th High School is still in planning, these children had to go outside yesterday in the rain whenever nature called. But you know, it's not just a restroom issue. It's the subpar learning atmosphere that our dedicated and talented teachers here in Prince William County have to overcome each and every day. And this problem is not new. It's a problem that's been around for a long time, and it hasn't been adequately addressed. But instead, we want to continue to debate a redesign to have 500 seats based on dubious projections. In my short time left before you, I won't get into the fact that a vaguely worded resolution, essentially a sugar-coated promise with no guarantee of substance, does not equate to an appropriation of dollars. I won't get into the fact that an obvious attempt by some to bring pork barrel politics into the welfare of our students is not the same thing as accepting and utilizing federal or state funding aimed at improving pre-K education. In other words, I want you to tell the board of county supervisors that a real financial windfall comes with no strings attached.
Thank you.
If they have $22 million of taxpayers' money to provide, send it, but send it without the strings, and then you do the job that we've elected you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Karen Trader Lee. Karen?
Yes, I am commenting on the same issue with regard to the 13th school. And I want to just bring a perspective and lens to that that speaks to the need to do equity analysis on all the work that we do, especially given the demographic changes of this county when we begin to approach a maybe more than 50% of the student population being students of minority backgrounds and a variety of differences in socioeconomic backgrounds. So that says to me that battling over school redesign and pricing models perhaps are the wrong strategic focus and conversation for dealing with the dramatic growth in this county, as we've heard and I've been more educated as I listen to the boundary dialogue and discussion. But, and listen to the issues in the eastern end of the county, where there's a significantly dense population and unabated housing growth. And as I listened to that, it made me also wonder about the quality of planning across the county on a regional basis that's not taking, that doesn't sound like it's taking into factors of controlled economic development. And where does that conversation occur? Route 1 is 95.2, I mean Highway 95.2, whenever there's an accident, and you add all of this movement that you've discussed that goes on in terms of busing and moving the students around and getting caught up in that kind of traffic once a week. And so there's a lot of other kind of factors that need to be, that it feels like this conversation is taking place at a smaller level than it ought to be taking place to take into consideration controlled growth in this county and transportation issues as well as the boundaries. What this issue of, the issue of, on the schools and school size and school overcrowding, those are structural issues. And structural issues turn into social stratification and student outcomes and student achievement. We need to be about the business of eliminating the opportunity gap, not growing it. Academic excellence and personal success is key to educational equity. We need to lower the gap between the lowest and the highest performing students. We need to foster a barrier-free environment where they can benefit equally. When responses, what responses then are we giving to school overcrowding? We need to be about the business, as we heard over and over again, about building more schools and not responding with more portable classrooms and more portable toilets. We should not transform social differences and what part of the county one resides in into academic differences, and that's a risk and a concern. So overcrowding is intimately concerned with equity, inadequacy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on to the sign-ups at the door, Dave Beavers. Mr. Beavers?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, Dr. Walts. My name is Dave Beavers. I live at 9269 Bowers Brook Place in the Brentsville District, and I'm here tonight to offer you thanks for your approval of the naming of the new facility support building for Mr. Randy Dasher. Randy Dasher served a long career with Prince William County Schools, most recently as Director of Facility Services, and I had the pleasure of working with him and for him. So I wanted to take time to share a few thoughts. Mr. Dasher is a very intelligent, hardworking, and dedicated person. He was and is immensely influential and has been a huge asset to Prince William County Schools. Quite simply, this man is a living legend who lives up to his billing. He's intelligent, hardworking, and has a common sense approach to the construction and operation of school facilities, and he'll long be remembered for the honor of working here at Prince William County Schools. Importantly, all of us who've worked for him hope to be more like him. Randy's one of a kind. He's given his heart and soul to the school division. He worked here for 40 years, as you might know, and we hope that his contributions will never be forgotten. Randy's courageous. He was never afraid to do the right thing. He's been a role model of a citizen in a government. He always did everything he could to make sure that the public's money was spent in the best and most efficient manner. Randy educated all those around him on the right way to do things. He exemplified characteristics that we all want our children to possess: strong character, ethics, empathy, care for others, and hard work. He was always the last one to leave the office and the first one to arrive. At least while I worked for him, he was in the office every weekend with few exceptions. He wasn't perfect, though. The only thing he ever used his computer monitor for was to hold sticky notes. That's not saying that he didn't respect the power of the computer, because he did. He understood everything about information, data, knowledge, and he could build anything. He was a master craftsman, and everything he did, he did well, well, except golf. But this is a very nice honor for Mr. Dasher's family. Mr. Dasher himself, I would imagine, is mortified right now. He's not the type of person who would want any recognition for the hard work and dedication he's provided to Prince William County Schools. He simply was doing what he was supposed to be doing. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beavers. Our next speaker is Chrissy Fowles? I'm sorry, in fact, the handwritten one always gets...
Chrissy Falls.
Falls, thank you. I'm sorry, Chrissy.
Chairman, board, Dr. Walts. Why can't we put the politics aside and look at what these kids need? Sawyers, you claim that the BOC resolution for our overcrowding problem intrudes on the power of the school board and the revenue share agreement. Well, if the school board had a great track record of what they did with the money given by the BOC, maybe the concern wouldn't be there. I do recall mismanagement of $625,000, and yep, I'll bring it up again, on a Steinway piano and a school name change that could have been done through fundraising. Something needs to be done. Need outweighs wants. Our Board of County Supervisors sees the need that our district school member sees and that we need another school because of the overcrowding. We have kids in trailers, including my children. Our children should be in classrooms where they belong. They want to make sure that the money is spent where it should be spent. Chairman Sawyers, take a minute and think about this, and think about the kids and what they need. As Chair of this board, the school board, your job is to make sure our kids have what they need to learn in the schools and become productive members of society. Overcrowded classrooms and trailers are not the answer. Listen, it's what we need. You brought your daughter. Why don't you set by example and knock it out of that chair and stay for the special meeting? Thank you, the two of you for bringing this up.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joshua Smith. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, and thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Joshua Smith. I'm here to discuss the redistricting, the new boundaries, and for me specifically... And for me specifically, where it affects is in Henderson School. I'm a military member. I've been in the Marine Corps for 20 years, since 1996. I work at Quantico. I've been a property owner, Montclair, for the past two years. And to bring a human element to this, because we've talked about a lot of these children in our school district as seats, and seats being moved here and moved there. I want to bring a human element to it and how it affects families specifically. So my oldest son, Ethan, is a second grader at Henderson Elementary School in Mrs. Rivera's classroom. Last year, he was in Mrs. Bush's class, and he enjoyed himself very much. He's a very smart kid, loves science and engineering. When he was born in 2008, I was deployed overseas supporting operations in Iraq. And from that time, the next six years of his life before moving here, I spent two of those years deployed overseas supporting combat operations. That, all those moves, all those deployments for Dad take a big toll on, on a kid like that. In coming here, I took an assignment that would allow me to not deploy for at least three years, maybe more. And in so doing, I did my research and found a place, a house, where we could get into a school that would be at least equivalent to the school that he was attending in San Diego. I did my research, and I found that I wanted to live in Henderson Elementary School's boundaries. There were other schools that I looked at, I even paid a premium to do so. Now I feel like the rug is being pulled out from under me. And just so you understand, you know, my son Ethan, he's going to have to change schools yet again and have this, this other, you know, insult to injury put upon him yet again. And we haven't even changed duty assignments. I have, my, my second son would also attend Henderson next year. And even if I could get a military waiver, I'd have kids going to two different schools. Henderson's the nearest school to our home. And, you know, after hearing some of the things here, Mr. Wilk brought up the point that there's been no request for anyone in our side of the community, Edgewood Drive near Northgate, to go over and attend Patty, but there's been lots of specific requests to stay in Henderson, and we'd like to stay where we are. Also additionally, from the testimony here tonight, the demographics change at Henderson means that an affluent community from down by Fitzgerald gets to move into that school that's really great at the expense of Fitzgerald. And you see the socioeconomic status get better at Henderson and just get worse at Fitzgerald. So I don't think it's a good plan, and I really wish that you'd reconsider some of the boundaries.
Thank you, sir.
Being drawn and the possible amendments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ihab Jodit. I apologize if I got it wrong.
Happens all the time. It's Ihab. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I'm not much of a public speaker. I don't have anything written down, and I'm not going to be nearly as eloquent as the people before me. Mine is pretty simple. My six-year-old son goes to Okaquan Elementary. Just like people before me, this is my first home that I've ever purchased in the United States. I'm an immigrant. I was the first to go to college in my family, and I would like the same for my son. We did a lot of research, and it seems only that little community is getting affected because it's a boarded-up community. It's a townhouse subdivision. So it's really, really easy on a map to go, that is easy to fix. As I was looking at numbers and I was listening to everybody talk today, Okaquan is slightly overpopulated, and I think there's a reason. People choose to go there. So the people are speaking. They want to go to that school. And for us to just change that up just because of zoning or whatever thing else, it doesn't really listen to the people, I would say. They have amazing scores versus Belmont. And so if Belmont's already overpopulated, and we're going to send an additional 80, 100 kids over there, what's going to happen to their test scores would be my question. So we're going to make a school that's not as good even worse. And I'm not sure if that's good. The only thing I could think of of why this would make sense, especially in that community, is perhaps to protect Okaquan's numbers so the county could look really, really good in the public eye when you go to national fairs and whatnot. Otherwise, I don't see any other reason as to why to change that from those kids going, having a great education, going to another one. I'll be the first to say, though, if Belmont can get to the same level as Okaquan, I'll be the first to sign up my kid there. But that's not really the case. And so if you still feel compelled to make that go through, at least have some sort of provision to where if parents that live in that community want to continue going to Okaquan, that they provide their own transportation and that they do that. Not that we would need it, we literally live 800 feet, yards, excuse me, 800 yards from the school versus two miles away that we're going. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Anna Rodriguez.
Good evening. I live in Greenwich Hills, which is two blocks away from, from Okaquan Elementary. Two of my three children go there. And if this rezoning takes place, my children are going to be sent to Belmont, which is two miles away. So it doesn't make any sense to me. And not being said that Belmont is not at the level of Okaquan Elementary. My son, since he take his first SOLs, he has gotten advanced scores in his SOLs. So that's pretty, for me, it's sending him to that school that is not credited, it's a real concern. And I don't know, I don't understand why, if there are other communities around Route One, why can't they not be served by Belmont Elementary? We are only, you know, we can't just go walking to that school. I volunteer to my children's school, and it's easier for me. If I don't have a car available, I just go walking. My mother, who doesn't drive, can go there, just if anything happens and I can go, I cannot go to my kid's school, she can go there and take care of it. But with these, it raises a lot of concerns to me about the future. And I, something that I don't know if you are seeing is that this is going to create a chaos in traffic for both routes. And it's also going to increase the expenses with the bus travel for taxpayers. And Okaquan is part of our community. Please don't split us up. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Our next speaker is Darlene Irvin. Darlene?
I do have to apologize. My name did not make it on the list, and it appears Darlene has left. So I hope it's okay that I take her spot.
I'm sorry, what is your name, ma'am?
My name is Lauren Smith. I don't think it made it on the list. It was not read.
Lauren, what we can do is we can get work through the list, and then without objection from the Board, we can take additional speakers, but we have to work our way down the list, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Okay, our next, Reggie Lipscomb is crossed off, so I assume that's not happening. So our next speaker then would be Amanda Lau. Oh, he did? Okay.
I'm not sure how my name got crossed off, but.
Well, no, you already spoke once. You can't, you can't speak twice. You spoke at the very, you were on the sign up sheet and the original, so.
So I can't speak again?
No, sir. You can only speak once during Citizens Time. And you, you were the, what, the first speaker?
All righty.
And so then Amanda Lau, Amanda?
I actually am from Cardinal Point, George Frey Circle. And I would like you to reconsider the rezoning. My kids attend Henderson. And my purpose is that we're a military family, and my husband is currently stationed in Miami, Florida. We've been through this several occasions. My family has been displaced from this place to this place, and we chose that. But our decision to move to George Frey Circle was for our kids to go to Henderson and get settled and have a place to stay. Unfortunately, my husband got pushed somewhere else, so we already have to deal with that. And then to displace my children in the meantime while we're dealing with, you know, their father being away, to me, I don't think that that's fair for them. And it's not a decision that we made as a family. You're making that for our, our children, and I don't think that's fair. So I would recommend or ask that you rethink that decision based off that, especially with my husband being away. I have to take my kids by myself to, to and from school, and I live right across the street, so I can walk and walk them back and forth. And I also work full-time, so it makes it very convenient instead of now, instead of going right across the street from our neighborhood, I have to drive five miles down the road. That makes no sense. So I recommend that you rethink that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last scheduled speaker is Siobhan Schartz. Siobhan?
My name is.
Okay, you're good. And we had one, one remaining with, with no objection from the Board. We'll listen to the one remaining speaker, ma'am, that came up earlier with no objection from the Board. Well, we can hear one more. Come on up, please. And if you don't mind, please, since we don't have you on the record, if you give us your name, your name for the record, please, thank you. And your address, I'm sorry, name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Thank you so very much for allowing me to speak. I, I hit some traffic and didn't make it just in time to get my name on the list there. So I appreciate that. I am Lauren Smith, and I live in the Granite Hills area, 13112 Putnam Circle. And my children go to Okaquan Elementary School. And we've heard from various parents, and I appreciate Ms. Jessie, Ms. Williams, their concerns with the boundary changes as well. That made me feel a little bit better that we have some more support for what's going on. There's clearly some things that don't make sense. But to give you another, another perspective, I mean, clearly there are concerns, people who have bought houses in certain areas, or it could disrupt certain other family issues going on. We have been living in that area for almost 10 years now. My daughter is a fifth grader. She's a tribal leader. She has flourished at that school. So when she was a kindergartner, Hamish Brewer was not the principal. So we have had the privilege of seeing that growth at that school and how tremendous and wonderful it's been. I'll tell you, the very first year he was there, he memorized all the names of those kids and their parents. So that I could walk into that school, he automatically, here's Sophie's mom. That's amazing, the individual attention. I think that's something that should be taught to all the principals in this area. Clearly, it shows, it's a Title I school that is nationally ranked. So clearly, my children are flourishing. But another situation, I know it doesn't affect my fifth grader because she's moving on, but I have a second grader. Last year, he was in kindergarten. And the staff there, his teachers, the principal, they recognized his special abilities, that he just was not doing as well as he should because he, his intelligence scores were much greater. They took the care, they brought it up to me when we noticed together as a team that he needed that extra care. They put him through the tests, and they very seriously considered him and advanced him to first grade later on in the year. So he is, and they have very lovingly made sure that not only he is up to par with the second graders this year, but he is flourishing beyond our expectations. All of us agree, that was the best decision that we could have made for that little boy. And if he were to get transferred schools from this community that we are so invested in, it would just be devastating to that sweet little seven-year-old boy, who is emotionally sensitive, by the way. He, he tells me all the time, oh, Mr. Brewer, Mr. McKnight, they came and talked to me today and sit, to see how I'm doing. That individual attention is amazing. So I ask you to reconsider these boundary changes, as many people have asked, and to think about the individual. I know that numbers make a big difference, and I know you were dealing with so many issues and so many concerns from his parents, but please don't forget the individual child and what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes Citizens Time, and that takes us to Board Matters. We'll start to my left with Ms. Ralston.
I just want to say thank you very much, everyone, for coming out on our first night back. I hope your holiday season was wonderful. Mine was. So have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Mr. Brand?
First of all, I want to say thank you to Father Vanderwoody of Holy Trinity Catholic Church for taking time to attend tonight's meeting and give a prayer. I really appreciate starting off the new year with his words. I think it meant a lot. I did have the opportunity to go to his church's Bethlehem Walk during mid-December. It was an excellent event, and I look forward to going back next year. I want to say thank you to the Boundary Committee. You guys took a lot of heat tonight, you took a beating. And as someone who I, you know, maybe the only person up here that's been part of two Boundary Committees for Haymarket Elementary School and Young Elementary School, I know the hard work that you put in, and the time and the hours you devoted, and I know the hard work of our staff. But I also appreciate the parents, you know, and I thank you all for coming out tonight and taking the time to, to voice your concerns, because that's important as well. And I appreciate the love you have for your schools, you know, if you, if you, you really care about a school and you're passionate about it, I appreciate that as well. So there's a lot of thanks to go around, and I definitely will lean on my eastern end colleagues, you know, for advice, along with the Planning Office and the Committee, to the best way forward when it comes to a couple weeks from now. Prior to the holiday break, one of our principals in the Vice Principal District, Mr. Damon Saroni of Piney Branch, suffered a great personal loss. I'm going to ask that you please keep him and his wife, who is a counselor in our system, and the rest of his family, your thoughts and prayers during a very difficult personal period. Like many, I was saddened by the passing of long-term Senator and statesman Chuck Colgan, who was an advocate for our school system, Prince William County, and my beloved alma mater, George Mason. I think that all of us on the Board could benefit to learn from the way he led his life, from the way he conducted his business as a state senator, often reaching across the aisle to find compromise, even if it meant he was occasionally or even often going against his own political party. I offer my sincerest condolences to his wife, children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Some of you may or may not know, I am a native Virginian, have lived in, have not lived in any other state in the United States. I was born in Richmond, grew up in Village in the Northern Neck, have lived in Northern Virginia in the city of Fairfax, I've lived in Lakewood, I've lived in Dale City, and I now live in Brewster. As a native Virginian, I learned from an early age about "Six Sepertyrannis," which is the Virginia motto and the Commonwealth's flag. It translates into English as "thus ever to tyrants." In case you need a definition of tyrant, it means a sovereign or other ruler who uses power oppressively or unjustly. Changing topics briefly for a moment. At least nine days prior to the School Board meeting on December 14th, actually on December 2nd, I emailed Per Policy and asked for the Board of Supervisors' resolution to be added to the December 14th School Board agenda. I was denied by the Chairman. At the School Board meeting on December 14th, I asked during Board Member, Board Matters for the BOS resolution to be added to the January 4th School Agenda. The Chairman acknowledged my request on the dais. On December 19th, I followed up with an email, Per Policy, and reiterated my request for the agenda item to be added. The Chairman never responded to my email, and the agenda item was never added to the agenda for this meeting. Thus, fellow Board Member Sadaway and I followed policy to set up a special meeting to discuss and vote on the BS, BOS resolution tonight. Once again, the Chairman has refused for the topic to be heard. Like many on this Board and many in Prince William County, I've grown weary of the tyrannical ways of our Chairman. What started as a power trip over policy has branched into far worse actions by our Chairman to dominate not only agendas, but the will of the people in Prince William County. I ask you, Prince William residents, not to stand for this injustice. I ask my fellow Board members to do the same, be an inspiration for the children in our school system by refusing to let a bully, or a tyrant, if you wish to use a stronger term, get his way. I look forward to our special meeting on the BS resolution tonight. We owe them a decision on their generous gift of offer of over $21 million for our school system, perhaps some of it we could use to eliminate outdoor toilets. And I have faith that we'll make the right decision for all students in Prince William County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please let Ms. Williams speak. Please let Ms. Williams speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to welcome everybody back to another calendar year of 2017, and I'm thankful and blessed to be here, along with everyone else who is here. I was going to not say anything because, you know, just seemed like the most appropriate thing to do, but it, it just seems to me that maybe there's a little bit of misunderstanding, or maybe I'm lost, but I don't think so. So I'm going to put it to you like this, I've sat on this Board for about three, going on four years, and I don't really often say that much. But I have consistently said, since I've gotten here, about equity, about building schools for the future, about working together, because I don't know if.
together, because I don't know if most of you know, I actually went to school for conflict resolution and peacekeeping. I've sat up here, I've voted against party lines, because I don't know how many people actually know that. I'm not a very good party political person. Um, most of my ideals fall towards one party or the other, but anyone who's actually, actually taken the time to speak with me and had a full conversation knows that I, um, go with my, my knowledge, my spirit, my faith in God, and, and what I believe is the right thing for my district above and beyond, because quite frankly, most of the time, I don't even make the democratic means, and I'm not even sure when they are or anything like that. It's not why I'm here, I'm here for kids. And I have a unique insight in, in that I was a Prince William County student and, um, went through the system. I spent most of December sick, and it allowed me a lot of time to, uh, read things and think over things, and I thought to myself, I can let all of this pass and not say anything because per the course, it's just politics, right? Everyone comes and they have their opinion, and they get their piece or that piece, and everyone has a right to, and, and is very entitled to how they feel, and they're, everyone's feelings are valid because they're your own. And, and that's why we have freedom of speech, is so that you can get up here and we can say what you believe from your heart and be passionate, and, and you're not wrong for saying that. And I can sit here and say, even when I don't agree with someone, I still want to hear their opinion. I've said that repeatedly. It doesn't make it, it, this is not a, a right or a wrong issue when we come up and we disagree with each other. It's supposed to be so that we learn and grow. What I have not seen, and what I would like to see, and what I would continue to ask for, maybe a little louder, actually not even maybe a little louder, but definitely a little louder, is for both boards to work together, long-term planning, and for all of us to do our research in our history. Because it's very easy to get up here, and I've done it myself, I'm guilty, I'm human, it's like everyone else, come new to an issue, feel one way or the other, make a stance without really going back to look at the history. And what happens? We're right back where we started. Because I don't know if most of you know, if you're new to the area, this is a conversation, east versus west, and poor children versus, versus better socioeconomic children, that we've been having time and time and time again, and we put another label on it, or a different color on it, or a different T-shirt on it, or whatever the case may be, but the children are still suffering. Whether you add in addition to a high school that's been voted on four times, or we talk about Robert's Rules of Orders, or you talk about who brought the, the high school, or you talk about kids in portable, having to go outside in, in, in the rain and the snow and the weather, we're doing a lot of talking, we're not doing a lot of action. Resolutions aren't appropriations, that's action. I can talk about going for a walk, unless I actually go for a walk, it doesn't mean very much. And that's the bottom line for me. I can't speak for the rest of my board members, but I am getting very, very tired of talking and not doing any action. And both boards are guilty. It's not just the School Board, or just the Board of County Supervisors. We cannot move forward if we continue to point fingers and don't actually do the work that we're elected to do. And it's all of our faults and all of our responsibilities if we're not thinking from the point of the children. And that's the bottom line. This boundary issue is a very clear example of that. For me, when we talk about the Greenwich Hills neighborhood, every single day, I pass that neighborhood, every day. You want to know why? Because I live near Veterans Park. In order for me to get to my other job in DC, even though the closest commuter lot to me is Hornet Road, I can't get there mile-wide just closer, but the traffic and the time that I would have to be there in order to park to get to my other job means that I can't go there, I have to drive Route 1 every morning and park at the Heckinger commuter lot. So I pass all of those communities. Those kids in Greenwich cannot walk to Belmont. It doesn't matter, at this point, to me, whether the two schools were identical in their academic qualities and services to the children. Those parents can't make those kids ceremonies, those children's games, the, see the, the posters on the wall, because if there is an accident on Route 1, or any sort of drama, they're not getting home. I can leave my job every day at 5:00 on the dot and walk in my house every day at a different time, not because of the time it takes for me to get from DC to Woodbridge, but the time it takes for me to get from 123 in Aquaquan Road to Route 1 and Featherstone Plaza, changes every day. I have missed my own children's activities. I have to take off work in order to get to an activity for my godchild in the middle of, of Montclair. I have to leave, I have to leave to go to a, an award ceremony. So I think that we've spent a lot of time looking at things piecemeal, and maybe it's time we all get together and look at things from a larger perspective, a more global perspective, and, and take our own advice, because that's what we're telling our children to do, and actually, that's what our children are doing for us anyway. Because as I've said time and time again, no longer do we live in a world where a child at Woodbridge may, or may not know someone at Hilton, or Garfield, or Brentsville, or wherever, they know, they talk. I can walk in my son's room, he's got to talk to some person that went to school, middle school, with him at Ripon, now goes to Battlefield, and they're talking to the kid, they went to elementary school at Aquaquan. It's no longer, these, these boundaries that we have as adults don't exist for them. And while we have to have them, because we have to tell buses where to go, and people where to live, and all of those things, it, it just seems now to the point where we're just being silly. We're fighting over who's going to have what, or who's going to have this, and we're not really thinking about the long-term children's educations, because I know I've said, and I know I've heard, if we do not do right by them now, and that means everybody takes a loss, and everybody takes a win, just at different times and in different ways, we will pay for them later. It's not a matter of not paying for them. Either you're going to pay for having to produce a quality citizen that's going to contribute to our, our economy, our county, and make all of our lives better, or we're going to pay for them because they're going to be in the system, taking, taking our money in that focus. So I'm not sitting here saying that I'm perfect, or I've made all the best decisions, because nobody has, we're human. But what I'm saying is, I think it's time that hopefully, we can do right by all of our kids, and really recognize what their issues are. If you know that our Eastern End schools on Route 1 are overcrowded, even with additions, let's stop talking about four classroom additions and thinking it's going to be 32 students, because we don't know with our new capacity numbers, let's really look at our new data, the new information we have available, and move forward. And I hope, um, that we can all do that, and, and start off this, this calendar year of 2017 with a fresh perspective, and, and do something, um, differently than we've done in the past, so that maybe we don't have to repeat ourselves and continue to have these conversations. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And Ms. Satterway?
Um, is it Mrs. Jessie's turn, Ms. Chairman?
She's going to go, I'm, we're going to, the vice chairman will go second to last, and I'll go last, so it's your turn.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First, I want to tell everybody, or say to everybody, Happy New Year, it's great to be back. I know that my own child was very excited to get back into a schedule, so excited that he woke up before 4:00 AM, um, and he's in high school. Thankfully, he wasn't in elementary or middle school. Um, so it's nice to be back into a schedule. Um, I want to let the board know, I want to let my constituents know, that next week I will be having any replacement surgery. And I hope not to miss more than one School Board meeting, but my activities will be greatly limited over the next couple of months, and so my apologies in advance for any of the activities that I might not be able to attend at my different schools or with the division. I hope to be very quickly back on my feet. Um, I'm also, oh, they put me on my feet that day, but anyway, it will be challenging. Uh, next week, I will not be able to be with you for our, um, board-to-board visit, I'm also not going to be able to attend the legislative session with you. When you make the legislative visits, if there's anybody you want me to follow up with, with a phone call, please let me know, I'll be happy to do that. So also, um, as you know, there's been a lot going on, um, the last few days with the board, and Mr. Brand addressed that, um, the timeline of asking for the BOCS Resolution 16-860 to be added to our agenda. Um, I want to note, I want to note that Mr. Brand asked twice, and I wrote in his, in his support after the December 6th Board of County Supervisors vote, Mr. Wilk also requested, and Dr. Waltz also requested that this item be placed in the agenda, the chairman would not allow it. Because of the chairman's refusal to allow this resolution to be heard by the School Board, Mr. Brand and I felt, as we had no option but to call for special meetings, Mr. Brand said. December 30th, 2016, at 10:37 AM, Mr. Brand and I released by email a call for a special meeting. The email was sent to Ms. Urban, the board clerk, Dr. Waltz, our superintendent, Chairman -at-Large Ryan Sawyers, Mr. Emon, Associate Superintendent for Communications and Technology, Ms. Mary McGowan, the Division Counsel, and copied to Mr. Phil Cavitz, Director of Communications, Mr. Brand, of course, who is sending it with me, and Ms. Simpson, our Deputy Clerk. Legalities for the call. Virginia Code Section 22.1-72, for annual organization meetings, the School Board states, "A School Board may also hold special meetings when necessary. Each School Board shall fix its own procedure for calling and holding any special meetings." Prince William, Prince William County Schools School Board Policy 131, Regular Special Enclosed Meetings, Section 2 Special Meetings, states, "Special meetings of the Prince William County School Board may be held by decision of the Prince William County School Board in Session, comma, as someone stated earlier, upon the call of the chairman, comma, or by request of two or more members of the Prince William County School Board, as Mr. Brand and I requested." It does not state anywhere that you have to ask the chairman, or that you have to ask the clerk, or you have to request permission, it just states, "may be held by decision of those two other sections, or by request of two or more members of the Prince William County School Board." Goes on to say, "Only business specifically called for in the announcement of the special meeting shall be conducted unless otherwise agreed to by unanimous affirmative vote of all Prince William County School Board members present. The announcement of the special meeting shall describe the specific details of the subject matter to be discussed or acted upon. The clerk of the board shall notify all Prince William County School Board members and shall keep appropriate memoranda of these contacts." The text of the email that was sent contained the call for the special meeting. The call was also attached, as was a courtesy copy of the press release that Mr. Brand and I were going to be sending out. In the email, I asked Ms. Urban and Mr. Emon, as required by FOIA, by state code, to please make sure that the public is made aware of the meeting when the School Board members were notified. At 11:01 AM, Mr. Cavitz sent out a confidential update to the board, and about the same time, a notice appeared on the Division website. 11:11 AM, the press release from Mr. Brand and I went out. We allowed time for the clerk to notify School Board members and for PWCS to notify the public and to fulfill FOIA before we sent out the press release. We decided that that was only appropriate, we didn't want board members to hear about this through press releases or through other means, we wanted them to be able to hear it through appropriate channels. At 11 o'clock, and then again at 11:14 AM, Mr. Sawyer sent brief emails in response. Um, I know it has been stated in news articles that he had found out about the special meeting from a press release. And I will state, there's no way he could have found out about the special meeting from a press release if he was first replying to our email at 11 o'clock AM, after it was sent at 11, at 10:27. The press release did not go out from Mr. Brand and I until 11:11. At 11:17 AM, I replied to Mr. Sawyers. Saturday, December 31st, 2016, at 1:29 PM, Mr. Sawyer sent an email to me and copied Ms. Urban, Ms. Simpson, the Superintendent's Office, Mr. Emon, and Mr. Cavitz. He did not copy Ms. McGowan, our School Board Counsel. He stated in the email, the first paragraph, "It was with substantial surprise that I read the PWCS press release yesterday purporting to announce a special meeting of the Prince William County, or PWCS Board on this upcoming Wednesday. Upon review, I find this to be, be out of order both procedurally and substantively, and I will not gavel the opening of any such meeting." He also spoke of his position's other administrative powers. In that email, he informed me, quote, "Please note that I have directed both the Superintendent and Clerk to coordinate and issue a new press release notifying the public that there will be no special meeting on Wednesday." He continued, quote, "Obviously, you are welcome to seek unanimous consent of the Board on Wednesday to add to the agenda a request to vote for a special meeting, bearing in mind the requirements I identified in the preceding paragraphs." At 4:35 PM, local media, Prince William Times, released a story stating that, quote, "School Board Chair Says No to Special Meeting on the 13th High School." The article leads with, quote, "Prince William County School Board Chairman Ryan Sawyer said today there will not be a special meeting Wednesday to discuss the 13th High School because a quorum of the eight-member Board will not participate." The chairman states in that article, quote, "To issue a press release to say that we're going to have a special meeting without the knowledge of the chairman or vice chairman is absurd." As stated, the chairman received the original email sent, sent out at 10:37 AM, and first replied at 11:00 AM, before the confidential update was sent out, before Mr. Brand and I sent out the press release. In light of those facts, to make such a statement to the press might be considered absurd. 4:44 PM, I responded to the chairman's email by sending a letter to Ms. McGowan, asking for a legal opinion. January 3rd, 2017, the School Board received an opinion from School Board Counsel. After receiving that information, Mr. Brand and I let the public know that we felt comfortable that we were well within our legal rights to call and hold the special meeting. 4:16 PM, Mr. Sawyer issued a board poll, quote, "Should the Prince William County School Board enter into a special meeting as requested by Ms. Satterway and Mr. Brand?" Policy 137 states, the Division, excuse me, um, Policy 137 states, "The Superintendent and Division Counsel shall be given prior notice of any poll to be conducted by the School Board." This was not done. The chairman did not follow the recently updated Policy 137. Additionally, for a poll to be valid, it must have a formal vote following the poll. A formal vote could not occur tonight without unanimous consent of the School Board to add it to the agenda, because the agenda had already been set in accordance with Policy 131. A vote at the January 18th meeting is useless, which would be our next meeting, as a special meeting tonight would have already occurred, making this poll completely invalid. This was another desperate attempt by the chairman to stop this resolution from being heard by the School Board. Under Virginia Code Section 22.1-71, a School Board constitute body corporate and corporate powers, and this is, these are constraints of a School Board member's authority, and that includes the chairman. And it states that the duly appointed or elected members shall constitute the School Board, every such School Board is declared a body corporate, and in its corporate capacity is vested with all the powers and charged with all the duties, obligations, and responsibilities imposed upon the School Boards. And it goes on to say at the bottom of that paragraph, "School Board members appointed or elected by district or otherwise shall have no organization or duties except such as may be assigned to them by the School Board or as a whole." Our Prince William County School Board Policy 113, on the authority of Prince William County School Board member states, "Prince William County School Board members shall have legal authority only when acting as a board regularly in Session, as we are now, or when empowered by the Prince William County School Board action to act as a committee. The Prince William County School Board shall not be bound by any statement or action of an individual Prince William County School Board member, except when such statement or action is under specific instructions or rules of the Prince William County School Board." And again, that's School Board Policy 113. So when the chairman stated to, um, when the chairman stated in his email to me that he was asking, um, for a press release to be issued saying, excuse me, I'm sorry, let me go back to the right place. I'll find the right place. In his email to me, he directed staff to cancel the special meeting and issue a press release to such a fact. And, Mr. Chairman, I would say you do not have the authority to direct staff to instruct the public that there will also not be a special meeting. This is in violation of Virginia Code and our own policies. Prince William County School Board of, Code of Ethics was voted on by this board on November 15th with unanimous vote. Number 5 states, "I understand that the Board makes decisions as a team, and acknowledge that individual Board members may not commit the Board to any action. I will not make public statements which may be perceived as an official statement of the School Board unless directed to do so by majority vote of the School Board." Mr. Chairman, you violated this when you stated to multiple media outlets that there would not be a special meeting. You had no authority to do this on behalf of the School Board. You interfered with the public's right to know about a legal School Board meeting, and deliberately set out to confuse the public and try to stop this legally-called meeting. Number 7 of the Prince William County School Board Code of Ethics, "I will uphold and enforce all federal, state, and local laws and all rules, policies, and regulations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the Virginia Board of Education." I think this one speaks for itself. Number 9, "I acknowledge that individual Board members will have no authority to direct Division staff. I will give staff the respect and consideration due skilled professional employees, and will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties." Goes on to say, "I will follow the chain of command and refer problems or complaints to the Division Superintendent for referral to the proper administrative office." The role of chairman does not give you authority or right to order direct staff to do anything without a vote and direction from the School Board, as stated in Virginia Code and also in school, in our Prince William County School Board Policy. You do not have the right to intimidate, or in any way bully or threaten, any Prince William County School staff members. And this School Board member also won't put up threats of anonymously posted on blogs,[1737.41] And this school board member also won't put up threats of anonymously posted on blogs, threatening a recall, and I know that was posted by you. Chapter 37, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, 2.2-3707, Meetings to be Public, Notice of Meetings, Recordings, and Minutes. Section D says, "Notice reasonable under the circumstance of special or emergency meetings shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided members of the public body conducting the meeting." And it also says, "At least one copy of all agenda packets, and unless exempt, all materials furnished to members of a public body for a meeting shall be made available for public inspection at the time such documents are furnished to members of the public body." That would be the minutes that were published, excuse me, the agenda that was published. It also states in Section I, "Minutes shall be recorded at all open meetings." So under FOIA, when the special meeting was called, notice has to be given, this is state law, notice has to be given to the public at the same time that board members are contacted. And I don't know if the public has noticed, but there was an agenda item at the bottom of our agenda for the special meeting. Now, that was not part of our regular meeting, that was for the special meeting. But it was posted because the public was saying, "Where's the call? Why isn't it posted?" It was posted. The chairman asked for that to be removed. The chairman, again, was not acting under his authority, under the authority that he's given as a school board member, he was acting in his own authority. He did not have permission from the school board to do that for this legally called Want to also say from that section, "Minutes, including draft minutes and all the records of open meetings, including audio or audiovisual records, shall be deemed public records and subject to the provisions of this chapter." When we sent the call, Mr. Brand and I also asked that the special meeting be televised. This is easy to do since it follows this regularly scheduled board meeting, which many of you are watching live from home right now or by computer. By Virginia Code, as I just noted, it's required by law that minutes be taken. The chairman does not have the authority to prevent minutes being taken. If the meeting is not televised, it is because the chairman and no one else has directed it. So if you are not able to see the special meeting, it is because the chairman has directed it. Note that under Virginia Code and our own policies as stated earlier, he does not have this authority. I want to know why the chairman feels so threatened by BOCs Resolution 16-860 that he has not allowed it to come before the school board as requested for two separate So what I've just talked about are Prince William County Schools' policy, the school board code of ethics, and the code of Virginia. These are not things I've made up, they are fact, and they are things that the chairman has not taken very seriously. Why would the chairman go to such lengths to fight against a motion that offers $21.3 million in construction funding that will directly benefit our students? This resolution completely fits with the school board efforts and commitment to reducing class size and reducing overcrowding, as has been talked about tonight with boundary changes. To fight against this just doesn't make sense. What board in their right mind, what school board in their right mind would turn down $21.3 million that's outside of the regular budget? That does not meet the common sense test. What message does it send to our parents and our students if we, as a board, were to say no to this offer or even, or not even entertain the motion? It's our job to provide for our students, to do otherwise as reckless and a violation of the job we were elected to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite and Mr. Deutsch. Mr. Deutsch, it is your turn. Again, Mr. Deutsch, it is your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is now the one-year anniversary of our first board meeting as a new board. It's been a long year. As a board, all of us ran for office in 2015. All of us were affiliated with a political party. It was no secret. I happen to represent a district that literally sits in the middle of the county. It borders five other magisterial districts, almost every single one. I also knew that we were largely finishing up a lot of the construction going on in our district. And so I came on very clear. I told multiple board members, I told the public, "Look, I'm here to work with all board members. Let's work on the issues that need to be addressed across the county regarding overcrowding, regarding test scores, to continue to improve things." Instead of moving forward from the election and working to address the issues that were needed, what we've seen is some of the most naked partisanship. To call it partisanship, though, is to be nice, because I've been around politics a long time. I may be young, but I've been involved for quite a while. And I've seen tough political fires. But generally, they actually follow the law. And when you fight hard and you get beat fair and square, you can tip your hat and you can move forward. But what we saw, what we've seen now is a total lockdown. And the inability now to put things on the agenda has shown that the partisanship is more naked than ever. And I want you, some things recently have made that even more clear. I think Mr. Jesse's comments crystallized it, because essentially, he said, "We won the election, so tough luck." And in a world that's supposed to be about kids, you would think that the board members would actually try to work together and show our kids that we can actually be better than Washington, D.C. Taking Washington, D.C. and their messed-up politics right now and patting ourselves on the back because we're following them is not an accomplishment. Can staff put the slides up that I gave them? Thank you. I think these statements, though, showed just how blatant the politics and the partisanship has gotten. Harry Wiggins is the chairman of the Democratic Party. Repeatedly on Christmas, he laid down the law, "No more schools west of Hodely until the elementary crisis is solved east of Hodely." He stated that in two separate messages on the chairman's page in regards to this issue. Can you actually flip to the other slide? It's even better. Thank you. And just like the members of this board tend to do, anybody they disagree with is a racist. And that kind of even deeper partisanship is very saddening, as we try to work together. Y'all can pull them down. The fact that it is the official line of the Democratic Party that some students matter and other students don't should be disappointing to everyone. We talk about the importance of Title I schools. There are half a dozen Title I schools around Manassas that in this conversation about Title I schools gets overlooked, and now we know why. They're west of Hodely Road. It doesn't fit the Democratic narrative. And so for all of the claims about working towards addressing all students, we know that that's not the case. Any pretense of that is gone. We've seen the chairman strike items from the agenda, and he claims that, "Well, this is the way that everybody else does it. The chairman has total authority over the agenda." Well, it wasn't, because things that he didn't like were put on before the policy was changed. But when you talk to other boards around the county, around the state, and I've asked board members in different regions in the state, what does it take to put an item on the agenda? Some people in one county said, "Well, if two members ask for it, it gets put on." Others said, "Anyone can ask for it, and it takes five votes to make sure it gets put on." And others said, "Well, we just follow Robert's rules, and, you know, we can request it, you can amend the agenda. Robert's rules is very simple processes." The only other board that had a more complicated policy was Fairfax, and the board member there told me, "Well, they have a very convoluted process that helps us bypass Robert's rules." And that's what we are getting to right now. But while, and not only do we concentrate power that way, but the very rules that we even adopt, we changed our board poll policy, policy 137, to specifically require the superintendent and legal counsel to be conferred with before sending a board poll. Because board polls are going out without even their notification, which got us in a lot of legal trouble earlier this year. And that didn't happen. So look, it's time to actually have a vote. We had eloquent talks about, "We need to take action and stop just talking about things." Well, then, let's take the action. We have the most ironclad promise of money ever. The Board of Supervisors sent us a letter to reiterate their commitment. "Upon the adoption of the price model at your January 4, 27 meeting, is the intent of the undersigned to vote in support of a motion to waive our rules of procedure at the January 10, 2017 Prince William County Board of Supervisors meeting and to vote in support of a motion to transfer budget and appropriate $10.6 million in FY 2017 to the Prince William County School Board in acknowledgement of the previous expressed needs for capital funding in the eastern end of the county." You couldn't have a more ironclad promise of money than that. And in fact, it's more ironclad than almost every other promise of money that we deal with in a budget cycle. Last cycle, we had money promised from the state. Well, their revenues didn't match up, and we didn't get it. And that was supposed to be money that was going to give teachers a pay raise. And so we had to rearrange our budget to come up with it, because we were going to keep our promise to teachers. But this is the most ironclad promise that you get in terms of commitment for money. There isn't anything more than that. This week, we also saw just how, well, we saw all the arguments against even having this vote. Well, back to having a vote, look, people want to work together with the Board of Supervisors? Let's actually give them the dignity of responding as a board to something that they, as a board, offer to us. To not even give them that dignity is a slap in the face. You know, we have the opportunity to walk into a joint session having already done something to show that we're working together. And then we can move forward and go, "What more can we do?" There's discussions of a large capital bond poll, if we can start showing we can work together, to even further escalate things. But, you know, we could take this money here. We can address schools that, you know, don't have an extra auditorium that need it, that have issues with bathrooms that are outside that need it. We can use these $10 million to address very specific needs on the east. This is an opportunity where the president is sitting right in front of us, and we just have to pick it up. But we also saw, I think, over this last week, the desperation of the arguments against the, well, against having the vote and against even accepting the money. We saw an op-ed that was pretty incredible with the types of claims that it showed. There's a claim that the high school is going to cost $160 million. Well, that's interesting, because three weeks before, the same person said it was going to cost $190 million. So what are we down to, $140, $150 now? We had, in the exact same document, we had claims that Janine Lawson is a bad person for not approving Stonehaven Development, but we should simultaneously pause development across the county. What gives? Like, where is the attempt at logical consistency? You know, this idea that, "Well, we just need land from the BOCs, not money." The BOCs is not sitting on large tracts of land on the eastern side. A lot of it's tied up in parks, a lot of it's very tight. We need the money to start buying land. We're not, there isn't, the BOCs, if it wanted to, couldn't just give us all the land to solve for all the issues we have. We have pieces of land we need to buy, we have others we need to look at, we need money for it. There's also just an ongoing lack of empathy to even try to understand the people who may disagree with them. To throw out that Mr. Trentum came up with the price model just as an excuse to bring back the Patriot design, really, really is incredible in the lack of attempt to even listen to what he's been saying. He spent a lot of his personal time sitting down with staff, developing a modern school design that would address a very specific need, the overcrowding issue. Patriot didn't have the 500 extra seats. We needed to address capacity issues. There's also a very weird math issue that keeps floating around. This idea that because high schools are only at 90% out west, that, well, the high schools, or because elementary schools are only at 90% out west, the high schools aren't going to be overcapacity. It fails to understand the basics of percentages. If I have a large pool that's filled 90% of the way with water, and I try taking all the water, and this analogy of the students, trying to put them in a much smaller pool, that pool will overflow. We have a lot more elementary seats out west than we do high school seats. So as those students move up, the same students will lead to overcrowding. Because the way that percentages work, as you reduce the denominator and the numerator stays the same, the percentage increases. So like, it's time to actually stop the talk, have the action. Let's have people of integrity who will stick to their word that they agreed to with the Board of Supervisors when we negotiated this deal. There are five votes on both boards willing to support this. Let's at least have a vote and stop the lawless actions and start moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch and Mr. Wilk. Mr. Wilk?
Yeah, I'll come back to the topic at hand. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things I've done the last couple of weeks and recognize some schools. I did, over the last two weeks, did get the pleasure of going to one of the Potomac Blue Blood High School basketball games, where they once again dominated. Outstanding team, really enjoyed that as well. Another event, I did have the pleasure of attending a great concert held at Grand Park, but it was for the Dumfries Elementary students, the choir and string concert. Major kudos to that school. It was hard to believe that they, the strings sounded so well when they only practiced 45 minutes every two weeks. It's crazy, but it was a great concert, great time. I like to get in my schools, as some of you know. I spent the last Friday before Christmas break walking around with recognized Forest Park class president, Robbie Coach, for spending his entire morning with me, taking me around, getting to speak and answer student questions in their physics class, ROTC class, AP Government class, that was more kind of my area, but the physics class, I just winged it and talked. Also visited Ashland Elementary. Major kudos again to the principal and AP. This was right before break, and they dressed up like little elves on a shelf. A little creepy at first, but hey, you know, I went, you know, whatever, went with it. So you got to love the elementary principals. So major shout out to Ashland and the teachers and all the great things they're doing. I also spent a couple hours in Patty Elementary right before break. Loved seeing kids so happy and so engaged, even right before Christmas. I also, last building, but not the least, I did have a chance to visit Williams, Mary Williams Elementary. As some have mentioned, it's a very overcrowded building, but they're making do, and they're doing great things. That overcrowding will be relieved with the addition of the Potomac Shores Elementary School they're building. But I do want to recognize Principal Cologne, who's doing an outstanding job in that building. She has worked with so many, Dr. Waltz mentioned the $10,000 grant, or not a grant, but a reward, I guess, from the Washington Redskins. I mean, she is one of the most driven, ambitious people I know. She gets grants, she works with business partners. It got so crazy that when I was in at Forest Park Q&amp;A, answering questions, one of the kids asked, "Why can't we have all the technology my little sister has at Williams Elementary?" So major shout out to Williams Elementary. So the timeline, I mean, this is well documented, I'm sure. As everyone knows, that last year, I did join some of my colleagues and support the price model for the 13th High School redesign. I'm not going to get into the details and the rationale for the support, but the proposal often ultimately failed unaffordably or votes. Flash forward to right before Christmas break, where I was tipped off that some type of work was being done on the BOCs to draw up a resolution to provide funding for us to help build the 13th High School additional wing. Wanting to stand up and speak for the constituents also in the east, I did get engaged in conversations and discussions and worked in collaboration to try to come out with some type of agreement before it was introduced. Now, to my dismay, when that was provided and the resolution was given, there was a little caveat that I was not aware of when I was talking and working on this, where the funding for the east would not come unless or until successful completion of the 13th High School. So given the perceived favoritism towards building the 13th, and the fact that there are major equity issues in the east, I pushed back and said, "I cannot support the resolution as it stands." I believe, as well documented in multiple newspapers, I said, "Don't make us build X to get the funding for Y." I believed, rightfully so at the time, that I thought there could be a definite trick or a catch with this, where in the past, that there have been times with the BOCs where things have been provided and then funding ultimately disappeared, especially given the study conducted and provided by Ms. Jesse, Ms. Williams, given the overcrowded in the east. However, in my discussions before tonight with members of the BOCs, I said, "If we can come to an agreement and collab-" can come to an agreement and collaborate on making sure that the funding was not tied upon the successful completion of the 13th High School, that it was given all upfront, all upfront and appropriated, that I would be willing to work out and support such an agreement. Now, given the timeline, yes, right before the meeting, as Mr. Deutsch mentioned, a signed statement from the five members of the B O C S guaranteeing, in what I would say is a compromise between both sides of this issue, providing the money upfront for both the East and the West. I, at this time, cannot see any reason why, with meeting the restrictions and what I proposed as a sign of goodwill, they came back and they did it, they signed the statement. I know it's not the actual vote, it's not a resolution, but I would find it pretty hard for these five individuals to be able to run in any future election, especially considering one is running right now for governor, who signed the statement, that the money would be revoked and taken away from us. So in summary, they met my demands and my offering of goodwill. I am willing to support this bipartisan agreement, take the $10 million for the eastern schools. As mentioned, we have overcrowding in the East, we have land that we have not purchased for Cherry Hill Elementary, we need that land, we have renovations that need to be completed in the C I P, we need to provide those renovations. And again, I just want to point out, this is additional money. This is not money being taken from a budget already. Now, I know there's the fear that they're going to cut our budget, but at this point, I think we need to act in good faith and take the money and use it for the needs of our students in both the East and the West. I yield my time.
I'm sorry, that's right, Ms. Jesse. Sorry, forgot about the order. Ms. Jesse.
Thank you very much. First of all, I wanted to remind people again that the MLK celebration will take place on the 16th, and I invite everyone in this room who's talked about equity and being bipartisan and working together to attend. 3,000 people will be there, and that would, Dr. King, if he were alive, would be very happy. And of course, I've already read something from one of the students. I want to talk a little bit about Aqua Quad before. You know, I've been, I've had the honor of seeing students who were not supposed to achieve, achieve above not just Title I schools, but middle-class schools. It's a lot of work. We were talking at P W A about working five days in my shoes. Try 180 days where every single day, you're telling these kids how bright they are, where you have people working until 12 o'clock at night, weekends, to show people that these kids can learn and they can learn at high levels. Also, at MLK, when we started that in 1992, these are not just African-American kids, they're kids from all walks of life, who have become doctors, who have become lawyers. Because for, if you talk about some of the African-American students, a lot of times their gift is the oration. They talk a lot, they're often disciplined for talking too much. And so I'm an African-American, so maybe I'll talk too much tonight, too, but I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. I want to just talk about what's going on here. And I've asked for a slide, my slide to be, could you put that up, please? I've had the slide put up before, and I didn't have the wording. And the last time, it was just three, two slides. The first image is assumed that everyone will benefit from the same supports. And you see that the child on the right has other things happening in his life and cannot see over the fence. The second image, which I didn't notice initially, the first child who's able to see over the fence, gives his curtain to the third child. The second image, individuals are given different supports to make it possible for them to have equal access to the game. They are being treated equitably. In the third image, all three can see the game without supports or accommodation because the cause of inequity was addressed, the systematic barrier was removed. First of all, now to this issue that we're dealing with tonight. I am, I am just stunned that individuals on this board would say that we're playing politics. I've been on this board three years. My husband was right. Politics, that kept me off the board. And so politics is not new to Prince William County School Board. They've been, it's been happening all along. I was a principal, I had no idea. I walked in here thinking, you know, they're going to select me because I'm a principal and I've done this and I've done that. They selected someone who had no background. And it was political, but I understand that. So don't tell me that we, this new board, that we are political, because I'm about these kids right here. And so I want to remind Mr. Deutsch that we are voting for a school that does not exist. There is no price model. It does not exist. So when you give me money to vote for a model that does not exist, you're asking me to revote on that model. So what we're asking for, you're asking the board to do, is a third, fourth vote on the price model. And I remind each of you on this board that we just voted on a code of ethics. Number one in the code of ethics says the following. I recognize that decisions are made by majority vote. Once made, should be supported by all board members. I will respect the right of other board members to have opinions and ideas that differ. I also want to remind certain members of this board who voted for George Hampton to have the Godwin model and for Mr. Wilson to have the other model, return to this board and voted not to give Dr. Hampton that model. So don't talk to me about politics. I also recall that this new model, the price model, was never approved by this board. This board, when I've been on this board, we never asked for a price model. Mr. Trenum asked for the price model. We have voted three times not to have the price model. Now you want us, it's not a meeting, it's a vote. I can't vote on a model that does not exist. And because they wrote this down, oh, I'm sure the people in the Gainesville district and in those districts that are politically pretty much gerrymandered are not going to vote for these people. They're still going to be on the board, and they know this. We're not crazy here. So for me, tonight, everybody in this audience heard that in three or four or five years, we're going to be at 200% capacity in those schools on the East. 11 out of 11 schools will be above 100%. In the sixth, the sixth plan, Plan Six, 12 schools are going to be above 200. So now we want to take $10 million to do what? Is it going to help us build schools for those kids, these kids on the East? And you notice they have no color. And I'm personally offended that you would say that it's about race. Yes, I was one of the people who voted for Kogan. The kids who came to my house were all white kids. They invited me to a swim meet, never been to one in my life, showed up in a sweater, looked like a fool, because I've never been in a pool. Had no idea these kids got up 12, 3, 4 o'clock. Inequity anywhere is inequity. For you guys to think that it's okay to take $10 million so that a school that has not been built, that yes, those elementary students do matter, because the school is not going to be built until 2021. And right now, at Brentsville and Osborne Park, the 500 seats you want exists there because they are 500 seats under capacity. I'm just asking you guys to be fair. I've been in this county when it's, what's fair? I was here in the 70s when we had overcrowding in Dale City, and we had to do something. And so we didn't do trailers, we did year-round school. Then it turned, and Lake Ridge came, and we got some newer schools. Now, you have had your turn. You have 23 schools under capacity. I'm asking you to realize that it's our turn now. It's time for the kids on the East. It's time for the, those schools that are going to be at 100% capacity to get their chance. I didn't vote against the meeting. I voted against putting something back on the board, on the agenda that had already been voted down. And I end with the following. I recognize that decisions of the board by the majority vote, once made, should be supported by all board members. I respect the right of other members to have opinions and ideas that differ. And finally, I will say I'm insulted that you think we should take the $10 million and maybe help with the bathrooms. Come on, guys. Down the road, if this school becomes overcrowded, you know that the school board will do something. But do something for what exists right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. I will, I will wrap up the school board meeting here with kind of, I know it's a kind of a hodgepodge of notes, so I apologize ahead of time for jumping around. I'll refrain from the personal attacks. I don't think they add to anything, although I certainly think that others obviously disagree. I'll sit here, a few things. First of all, obviously, hadn't really reviewed, I was out of town when, when the request for the, which is the word the policy uses, the request for the, excuse me, the special meeting came through. Just to be clear, Ms. Satterwhite, I wasn't saying that I first learned about the request through the press release. I was saying I first learned about it being, you know, supposedly official through the press release. And it happened, it happened very quickly on a Friday before New Year's Eve. And according to my discussions with Dr. Waltz, he didn't remember necessarily even a special meeting happening during his time here. If so, maybe it was one, but he wasn't exactly sure. So this isn't something that happens on a regular basis. Prior notice in the same policy requires nine days. I realize FOIA may require less days at times, but, but policy, by the school board policy requires nine days for good reason. Time for boards to review things, the public to have their say, to know about the meeting, to show up in time, to be able to present themselves and their opinions at the same time. Nobody is preventing a discussion. In fact, this discussion would have happened December 8th, had the Board of County Supervisors, the majority of the Board of County Supervisors been able to come to the meeting that we scheduled with them earlier. This discussion would have happened before this drama was, was interjected into the conversation. And so we later pushed back the meeting to a date that they chose, which was Tuesday the 10th next week. So everybody's for having a discussion, and that can happen, and it was on the schedule to do so. So we have a joint meeting on the 10th, I want to remind everybody of, and that can be discussed there. Nobody, to be perfectly clear, nobody on this school board has refused funding, not a single person. The reality is, is that the funding, when the funding comes, it's up to this board to then decide and get proper community input on how to use it. The Board of County Supervisors, and this is overwhelmingly ruled on by the courts over and over and over again for decades and decades and decades, the Board of County Supervisors cannot put strings on money outside of the nine major categories in which they're allowed to fund the school system. Doing so would certainly jeopardize and put both boards possibly at risk. I will agree, although I won't attack the people, I will say that this board certainly has a different focus than previous boards. There are many families who need protected who don't come to board meetings, who can't come to board meetings, who don't have the ability to come to board meetings or email their supervisor, or, excuse me, their school board members or their supervisors for that matter. They don't have those, those luxuries. And to ignore that by trying to, trying to find a loophole within policy, which by the way, policy constantly can, policy comes first, then Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order only applies when there is no policy. So we can change anything in Robert's Rules of Order we want, for the record. Only Robert's Rules of Order kicks in when policy doesn't kick in. It covers everything that policy doesn't cover, procedurally speaking. So that's the catch-all that the board has had in for decades and most boards have in. Regardless of the hype, it is my, my opinion that obviously, the policy is poorly written, but it's for this reason, and let me explain. It says the majority of the board can call a meeting. That makes sense. The majority of the board can basically do whatever it wants within law. The same policy then wouldn't also give the minority of the board the same power. It would just say the minority of the board can call a special meeting, and here's why. Because if you're the minority and you don't realize, and you realize that you don't have the votes to call a special meeting, why would you do it in session when it would fail? You would just do it out of session when you knew you didn't need the majority of the board. The other reason why you need the majority of the board to agree is so you know you can have a quorum. This obviously would establish a very, very slippery slope of very short notice for very special meetings, for very strange reasons that no one would want to do. Proper notice is in there for a reason, so people can ultimately know what is going We definitely need to clarify the process. I am all for explaining the policy. Like I said, I think it's a poorly written policy. I think we can certainly come up with procedures on how to call special meetings, if that's what the board wants to spend their time doing. The reality is, is that, in my opinion, after having, during the holiday season, after having a few days to look at the policy, read up on different things, it was, to me, it was up to the board. This wasn't a unilateral decision of myself. This was to say, hey, board, the request told the chairman to ask the board. Every time two people request it, we need to ask the board if we want to have a meeting. It didn't ask to suspend the rules, which would be the nine days' notice, which I think is required by policy for any meeting, even if the agenda item is one item in a special meeting. It still requires that it be, be nine days, in my opinion, and it's my job to interpret the policy, and the board can overrule me should they see fit. So we need to make sure that the agendas, the agenda processes are followed properly when it comes to notice. Ultimately, when it comes down to it, the B O C S cannot find items by line item. They know that, we know that. The Supreme Court of Virginia has ruled on it over and over and over again. It simply can't happen. So we put out the request by two members to the board to see if they wanted to have a special meeting today on this issue, and it came back no. So we can have spirited discussion by law and the, but the B O C S must give us the funds and allow us to invest them as they see fit. Ultimately, if it's a trust issue for you, there are remedies for that. If you think the B O C S should have line item control of the, of the, of the school board's budget, then your, then your problem is with Richmond. Richmond has the law. Richmond says that the B O C S does not have the authority to have line item control over our budget. That's where that comes from. If we can't allow people to break the law, even if it's for something that we want. In fact, Robert's Rules, excuse me. me, Robert's Rules forbids us to suspend the rules if the discussion is a violation of law, even with a unanimous vote, to suspend the rules. This, it's obviously my first run at this. I was actually kind of excited about the joint board meeting for the first time, and then this, this kind of came through and corrupted the process. See, to me, the process would be, we would have had this discussion ahead of time. We would have said, "Here's our common goals. Regardless of the things that we disagree on, we could find two or three things that we agree on, and then maybe we could say, 'Would you be willing to fund those?'" But for the Board of Supervisors to fund a school that has bipartisanshipally failed twice, the price model, which by the way, to prove the point, why aren't we talking about the Bryce model if we didn't like, if the Battlefield model passed to begin with, and that's the model we wanted, we should have redesigned the Battlefield model, not the price model. So this ultimately comes down to the Patriot model, not the 500 seats. So, the reality is this. We could have had the conversation. We could have discussed this in an open forum. We could have combined ideas. We could have done those types of things to come up with a collaborative effort. But instead, Supervisor Canlin, Supervisor Lawson, came up with an idea, promised Supervisor Principi $10 million in the budget in order to get his vote, and then came up with an idea that violates the law and they know it. The reality is, is that this school board may determine to use that $2 million a year, which is what they're offering for 10 years. Keep in mind, they cut us by $7 million, so even if they gave us $2 million, we're still five in the hole. If they, if they decide to give it to us, this school board would then determine what we'd want to do with it. And the fact of the matter is, there are parts of this county that this school board and that Board of County Supervisors has abandoned for decades. And it's time that we have a conversation about the way to use that money. If this school board determines they want to use it for additional 1,000 seats in the West in the high school, or they want to do it for elementary schools in the East, that is this board's decision to make. I will never, ever, ever turn down a penny from the Board of County Supervisors. But they have to realize that it is solely our authority to spend Allison, you said a lot, so I was taking quick notes, so I can't even, I can't even read half my notes over here. But the reality is, the reality, one thing I want to touch on is Dr. Waltz never, never asked to have that agenda item on, it was only asked by Mr. Bryan. And so, Dr. Waltz's role, by the way, in the agenda, is typically things that are required by law. Obviously, as a board member, we can't typically know all the things that are required. He knows when it's time to put things on, when it comes to the budget or when it comes to other items. That is traditionally the superintendent's role in that. And I just want to be perfectly clear. Don't take my word for it. Please do the research yourself. Go look up the, go look up the agenda items that Ms. Jessie and Ms. Williams had on during the previous board. There weren't any. Very few. Two, I think, in your, in your three years on the board and your two years on the board during the previous time. And they were, they were, one of them was the 50th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act, I believe, was an agenda item that these two had on. They were constantly not allowed to put things on the agenda. So to act like this is a new thing is quite frankly absurd. So the reality is, the board did not want to hold a special meeting, and certainly, even if you get past and you disagree with me on the fact of who can call it and why they can call it and who can move forward that way, certainly the idea that two members can just declare a time and a date for a meeting doesn't make any sense and certainly has no precedent in the way that we operate in any way, when it comes to work sessions, when it comes to anything else that we do as a board. We certainly corroborate for the best time for people to sit down and do these types of things. So, it is obviously my ruling that the request triggered the board poll, and therefore the request also triggered knowledge to the superintendent and to legal counsel that the poll would be coming, because that's what the request does, because ultimately, we need to find out if the board will be there to do it. So, with that, I'm sorry that I never got a phone call or a discussion or a thought process about this from, from either Mr. Bryan or Ms. Satterwhite ahead of time. You know, like I said, I was, I was out of the state when the email came through, so I certainly, once I got back, I had time to kind of review the policy and have some time to read where, how it was applied and how else it was used. So the law that Ms. Satterwhite stated about earlier says very clear that the school board, the law says very simply, the school board can hold special meetings, and it can determine how to hold those special meetings. Period. That's all it says. It doesn't say how they can be called, when they can be called. It just says it's up to us to determine how we hold those special meetings. And so, being that this was unprecedented and hadn't been done, at least maybe in Dr. Waltz's time, I thought it was best to offer it up to the board for a decision whether or not they wanted to hold a special meeting or not. So, and the board ultimately ruled that, decided that they would not, and that ultimately, we can have these types of conversations in our joint meeting, which will be right out here in the atrium on January 10th, beginning at 6:30 with the Board of County Supervisors. So, with that, and no, I'm sorry, 6? I apologize. Thank you, Ms. Urban. That's why, that's why you're here. 6 o'clock with the Board of County Supervisors in the atrium. And with no further business for this board, this meeting is adjourned.